Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fury, second by Mr. Dobler, that we establish June 13th, 2019 as the graduation date. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a facility lined up for that date yet?
Dr. Cook?
So the facility we have a contract with is the Bushnell. The June 13th was the one and only date we had available to us this year at the Bushnell. It seemed like a long shot at the beginning of the school year. They have an event next week that takes up the entire next week. And so last year we had seven snow days. If we had anything close to seven snow days, we would not be able to use the Bushnell. And we, as you know, we had looked at other sites. But with the warmer winter, although, you know, it's been cold here and there, but less snow events, we had two snow days and so we're able to use the Bushnell. So we're thrilled.
All right.
Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. On the poll, same abstention. Motion carries 7-0-0. Next is the Next Generation School and District Accountability Report.
We have one more.
I've got one more motion, I think.
Sir.
Second motion. I missed that. Pardon me.
You gotta keep them on.
And I appreciate that. I fall very short. I'm human. Recognizing Mr. Fury.
Thank you. I move the Board of Education approve a change to the approved 2018-2019 calendar, setting Friday, June 14th, 2019 as the last day of school for students in grades kindergarten to grade 11, and the last day for teachers would be Monday, June 17th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fury, second by Ms. Bissel, that we change the approved 2018-2019 calendar, making June 14th, 2019 as the last day of school for students K to 11, and the last day for teachers would be Monday, June 17th. Any discussion? Mr. Fury?
I guess through you, I'd like to hear about 12th graders.
Dr. Cook?
So 12th graders would be in school on the 13th. They're in school on the 14th through project graduation until typically about 4:00 a.m., 4:00 or 5:00 a.m. And they would not be, you know, they'd be able to go home after project graduation.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. On the poll, same abstention. Motion carries 7-0-0. Making sure there's one motion.
The calendar's ticking.
Now, I will go to agenda item number four, the Accountability Report. Recognizing Dr. Cook.
Okay. Thank you, President Lachart. And so as we've presented before, we're going to present the District Accountability Report. Board in Windsor, I think, is pretty well adept at the report. We've presented this in the past, and as you know from your work at CAE, many other boards are just kind of starting to delve into this, and we've shared quite a bit of information with you. Just a few notes, and Dr. Oliver's gonna join us at the podium, and then we're gonna go through each school individually. I've asked principals to try and stay to about 10 to 12 minutes for their portion of the presentation, and then, you know, there have to be questions, understanding that, you know, usually the first principal gets the most questions, and we kind of tailor off from there, just because of the report itself. We are going to start with the high school this year and work backwards. We've always, you know, usually started pre-CAE too and moved up, but we're gonna start with the high school this year. But in terms of the report itself, Dr. Oliver just advanced one slide. You have in front of you the document itself, and we know it's relatively confusing, but, you know, again, this is our third year working with this. I know you've seen it the three years for board members who've been on the board for that time, other board members this is the second time. But just to indicate some highlights from it, there is a rather large document available through the State Department of Ed website. If you're very interested in going much deeper into it after tonight, we can certainly provide that to you. There are 20 indicators that schools are rated on based on results or information documentation that we provide the state throughout the year. And the vast majority of those are assessments, but there's other pieces like attendance and ninth graders being on track for graduation, our graduation rate, and then also what the percentage of students entering college in the fall after their graduation date. So the indicators you'll see are on the left-hand column. They go 1A to 12, and so there's multiple areas within some of the indicators. The index rate, which you'll see on the top of the chart, the third column in, it's called index slash rate, and that is the actual score that the district has achieved on that measure. So taking one, for instance, 1A is our ELA performance index, and so the district is seeing the 62.4 out of a target of 75. 75 is our target, as I move to that column, is pretty much like a perfect score, what they're looking for, you know, from the state for districts. So very clear that it's, you know, most of the cases are not looking for a complete 100. It's understanding that, you know, all students are not going to be able to take art, all students are not going to be able to pass the physical fitness test. So they look at that as a target rate, and no school is hitting all the targets. And then the index rate itself, it's, you know, just want to be clear, because sometimes it's better to be lower, sometimes it's better to be higher. So for instance, on the chronic absenteeism, you want to be, have the lower percentages as possible. The other indicators, you want the higher. And then a percentile rank does not indicate necessarily a grade, so 75 doesn't indicate a C or any of those rankings, as you can see, some of the targets are 75. So state provides some additional information on that. So there's points earned, maximum points after that, and then the percentage points earned. So just some different indicators for you to be able to see. You'll become more familiar as we go through with the future slides in the schools, but, you know, it's just kind of a high-level indicator for you. And then the state average is provided as well. So a lot of information provided on a chart, but we can stop and explain any piece of that. Dr. Oliver, I think, has some additional information as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cook. So good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Dr. Cook mentioned, Connecticut's Next Generation Accountability System, basically it's a broad set of 12 indicators that are really intended to give us a more holistic perspective of performance at both the district and school level. There are several academic indicators, and I'll get into those in just a minute. And as Dr. Cook also mentioned, there are other indicators like physical fitness, art access, as well as career and college readiness, that taken together can really help tell the story of how well we're preparing our students for success in college, careers, and life.
16, 17.
So here is a snapshot of our 2016-17 District Accountability Report. I believe we're all familiar with this report as it was presented to the Board last year and also available to our home viewers. So for the purposes of this presentation, as well as time constraints, I'm just gonna skip ahead and focus on our 2017-18 Accountability Report shown here. So I'll just jump right into indicator one. So the performance index is the average performance of students in a subject area like English, English Arts, or mathematics on the state assessments for all students, as well as high-need students. So just a couple of notes here with respect to the 2017-18 report. You'll notice there are no science results here, and that's because Connecticut administered a field test to students in lieu of the CMT cap science. So because there were no scores issued for that field test, as a result, science is not reflected on our current Accountability Report, and we will be looking forward to seeing that on our next Accountability Report. But I did want to explain why indicators 1E and 1F are blank for this year. The other thing to note would be the high-needs population. So basically, that's a supergroup, and its membership consists of economically disadvantaged students, English learners, as well as students with disabilities. And then finally, as Dr. Cook mentioned, we do have a performance index, which I'll be talking about in just a minute, as you can see here in column three, and that number ranges from 0 to 100. And again, is reported for all students, as well as high-need students. And Connecticut's ultimate target for a performance index is 75, and that's shown in column four. So typically, we use a criterion reference interpretation of this data. So for example, that might look like us comparing our index to the target of 75. Another criterion reference interpretation of this data would look like trend or improvement data over time for the same school or same district, and we'll take a closer look at that on the next slide. So to kind of dig into this report a little bit deeper, if we take a closer look at indicator one, we see our current ELA performance for all students is 62.4, and for high-need students is 53.1. So again, back to that data interpretation, that's below that 75 target that I just mentioned, and the reason the state puts the target at 75, because that number puts a student solidly in Level 3 for smarter, balanced achievement. So moving down to indicator two, which is academic growth, and that's really a cornerstone of the Next Generation Accountability System. So unlike the achievement data we just went over in indicator one, academic growth values the improvement in academic achievement of matched students in grades four through eight. So in my opinion, I believe it to be the gold standard in terms of broad measures of curriculum and instructional effectiveness, because it tells you the story of how students are growing over time, so year to year, as students progress through Windsor Public Schools. So again, digging into our report a little bit deeper, for example, our 2017-18 Accountability Report shows us the ELA average percentage of growth target achieved for both all students and high-need students decreased by 4.5 points. And so I do want to share with the Board and our viewers at home that this growth is certainly disappointing for us, and I do not believe that it reflects either the ability of our students or the capacity of our staff. I know what it goes into to write curriculum, to plan a lesson, to instruct our students into Plan PD. And if you think back just to a year ago, by my estimation, our district was in the top 10 in Connecticut in terms of growth. So I truly do believe we will get there again, and we'll get there through our collective efforts to improve teaching and learning with a continued focus on targeted and purposeful planning to meet the needs of all learners. And as you can see here, the goal for growth is really 100%, because our philosophy, and it matches the state philosophy, is that all students should be growing to meet their individual potential. So that means whether a student is low-performing or high-performing, all students really should be meeting their growth targets. And as I mentioned, we did not see the results that we would have liked to have seen for indicator two, but I do want to point out Windsor did meet its ESF target, so that's every student succeeds act to reduce chronic absenteeism, and that is indicator number four. So I did want to point that out, because that is an achievement for the district. And as I just mentioned, another criterion reference interpretation of this data is looking at trends in subject performance for students over time. So here you see a three-year snapshot, and not much difference here in terms of these academic indicators, but as I mentioned, we did not see the overall growth that we would have liked to have seen. So we are implementing a multi-year strategic plan to address the needs of our learners, as well as the results on the Accountability Report. So we are continuing to implement our strategic operating plan, and we're currently defining our profile of a graduate. And again, in order to realize this vision and to meet our high-level goals to improve academics, there must be high-quality instruction in every classroom, every day, for every student. And so with that said, like I said, we're going to continue to focus on intentional planning to assure that all of our students, including our high-need students, get what they need in order to grow and thrive here in Windsor. And so this evening, you'll hear more from our building principals, starting with Mr. Earl Sunday, about our relative areas of strengths, areas of opportunities, as well as the strategies that we will be employing to meet the needs of all students, as well as address our Accountability Report.
Thank you.
Do you have questions as we go? Do you have something?
Do you have a question for?
Yeah.
Ms. Bosch?
Yeah, just some general questions on the numbers before we dive into the school.
Sure.
And really not the numbers themselves, you know, save those for the schools, but just on the indicators. From my understanding, and I know I have been here before, but indicator number one, is that purely, purely scores on assessments that go into indicator number one?
Yes. So indicator one, as I mentioned, normally science would be included, but for this year, science is not included. So this is the academic achievement for subjects for both ELA and math.
So indicator number two, is that actually tracking individual students between fourth and eighth, not the cohort at large? I see a lot of heads going, so that's individual students.
Yeah, so that's looking at longitudinal groups. So what's great about this is it actually looks at a specific student, their growth, let's say, from their, from fourth grade to fifth grade, or seventh grade to eighth grade. And so each student has an individual growth target based upon where they fell, either in that band, and also with respect to their scale score. And so we get points for the number of students that are, or the percentage of the growth target achieved for each individual student, and as a district, that number is rolled up across all students.
Okay, thank you. And for number four on absenteeism, does that take tardiness into account, or is that purely absenteeism?
That's a great question. So no chronic absenteeism, it's the percentage of students missing 10% or greater of the total days that they're enrolled. So for example, if you look at 180-day school year, that will be students with 18 or more absences. Tardies are not factored into this Accountability Indicator.
Is that excused absences factored in, or no?
Any reason.
Any reason?
Yes. Because the rationale is students need to be in class in order to learn, so whether it's excused or unexcused, it doesn't matter.
And for number, just to keep going down the list a little bit, for preparation for college and career readiness, what would it take for, you could do either side of the equation, for a student to either be considered prepared or not be considered prepared? What's the line on that one?
That's a great question. So that looks like the percentage of 11th and 12th grade students that are taking two AP classes, or perhaps two CTE classes in the same pathway, or two workplace experiences. So that's how indicator number five is calculated. And then in terms of indicator number six, that's the percentage of 11th or 12th graders passing that benchmark exam, like an AP exam, SAT, et cetera.
So to back up to number five, if they were taking like technical drawing and automotives, they wouldn't have to take an AP exam to be considered prepared for career readiness?
Correct. So indicator five is more about the exposure to the classes, and indicator six is more about the assessment.
Okay. And physical fitness, what, sorry, you might have covered that one, I don't remember. Is that a certain number of fitness classes, sports?
Correct. So in order to get credit for that indicator, students have to meet standards on all four areas of the Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment.
How our index is only 53% there when we have people that are doing like work that could go on the 16th chapel, 16th chapel? It's like, and it looks like for points earned, I don't want to get into numbers, but we'll save the numbers, but the arts access, I feel like that's a strength for our district. So curious, you know, what they're looking at. So when we get there, maybe to high school, we could say, what's missing?
That's a great point, and that's actually one of the things I was thinking about as I was mentioning, you know, these numbers don't, in my mind, actually reflect, you know, our students' ability. So how they come up with this number, it's purely an enrollment number. So it's the percentage of high schoolers, so students in grades nine through 12, taking at least one art course.
Okay.
So I agree with you, have an amazing art program, but the indicator, the points are actually around art access, percentage of students taking art.
Thanks.
Ms. Bosch?
I had a question around your process generally for, you had mentioned, which I was really grateful to hear, that you have a multi-year strategic plan in place. So like, what's your process for kind of checking back in and determining whether or not that's effective, and how to change course on that?
That's a great question. So the majority of that work actually runs through our district data team. So two years ago, we reconvened the district data team, which is a cross-section of educators across the district. We have representation from cabinet, administrators, teachers, instructional coaches, support staff, and so together, we crafted a three-year strategic operating plan. So we have four high-level priority areas that we're working on, so one of which is academics. And so the way that works is in terms of monitoring our progress. The district data team meets regularly, and so that's one thing we do look at. So in particular, the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, there's a district data dashboard that's updated with our information. We look at it, we look to see kind of how we're progressing, and at times, you know, there are definitely need for kind of mid-course changes or changes to the next year, so that's something we'll be taking a closer look at at the end of the year to kind of see, you know, where we landed, and then if there are any adjustments that we need to make. But for the most part, I do not anticipate any major changes to that plan, because our thinking really is to kind of stick with what we have identified as our areas of opportunity, and in order to make true change, it typically takes time. So we don't want to scrap the whole plan, but we just want to see what parts we need to be able to tweak to be more effective and get the results that we would like to see.
Okay, thank you. So I see like three potential priority areas, and you mentioned academic equity and climate as its group throughout the presentation. What's the other, what's the fourth one?
Thank you. Systems. And so we've actually called out two priority systems that we are working on as a district. That first system, which we've talked about, the NTSS system, and so that's a system where we look at providing both academic and behavioral supports to students as needed on a tiered support continuum based on student need. The other major system that we are working on are professional learning communities, and those are basically collaborative teacher teams that meet to look at and analyze instruction based on data, because it all wraps into our high-level theory of action, which is basically if we can support teachers and improve instructional decisions, that's going to result in high-quality instruction, which the research tells us should also result in increased or better outcomes for students.
Thank you. So coming to the tiered approach, I was curious, I'm just gonna ask these questions now, because I trust that like you'll be able to provide me the information, so I don't have to like go school by school, which I tend to have, I have a tendency to do. So how does, I'm curious about how, like, if you go through the presentation, right, the STAR assessment, there's the four tiers, benchmark, on watch, intervention, and urgent. So how do you align that with the three tiers that I'm used to seeing?
Okay, great question. So with respect to our district assessment, so that is the STAR, and as you have called out, there are kind of four bands or four achievement levels, and so the highest being benchmark, the lowest being urgent. So in most cases, what you'll find are students who are either at the urgent level or intervention level would be the students most likely to receive additional supports, but that's not always necessarily a straightforward answer, because, for example, you could have a student who's on watch and may be looking at other metrics. We have identified that student might need additional support as well. So there are a number of factors that go into determining support. So there's a system that we've actually crafted as a district where there's a request for student support that's usually generated at the instructional level, and so there's a lot of information that goes into that request for support, so usually more than just the STAR data. But certainly STAR is an assessment point or piece that we use to make that determination, but it's not the only thing that we use.
And from what I understand about STAR, though, from what has been shared with me and what I've heard, maybe correct me, STAR is one of the primary assessments used to kind of indicate that a student may need interventions, and that's checked on a regular basis?
That's right. So the way I kind of think of it is almost like a universal screener, so all students take the STAR assessment, and then based on their performance, so for example, if a student comes up in the red or yellow, it's a good indication that student may need support, but then what we do is we verify that thinking with additional metrics. So that could look like another diagnostic assessment, it could look like, you know, another district assessment, it could look like some other. So in other words, what we try to do is we try to triangulate data before making that recommendation, but certainly the STAR is a major piece of that NTSS kind of flow, but it's not the only piece.
So would it be like possible for follow-up question? I'm having some difficulty understanding, like, because I'm so used to the three-tiered triangle, and that's kind of what's been shared with me so regularly, is like, where are we at in terms of that, that tiered system? Like, how many students are receiving tier-one intervention, percentage of students receiving tier-one interventions, tier-two interventions, and tier-three interventions? That's not, tier-one is not interventions, right?
Right.
That's 80% of all students, and that's the general kind of curriculum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Because I don't, I don't, I'm having trouble connecting that with here. So I guess in a follow-up question at some point, if you could share later on, what are the percentage of students who are receiving interventions? That's my question.
Okay. Right. So I would have to look into the.
Totally fine with a follow-up. Okay. Thank you. My last question is, as I understand, the Next Generation Accountability Report, that is used by the State Department of Education to kind of determine who's, what districts are still in turnaround school status versus focus schools, and do you have any idea, like, they shared with you yet, about where we're at in that, in that categorization?
So, thank you for that question. So yes, so another point that I would like to mention is that, again, our overall accountability index did go down, and so, you know, certainly we'll continue to monitor that. But Windsor High School did come off of the list as a focus school, so that certainly is a celebration for us.
Congratulations.
Because they were previously identified as a focus school for mathematics, and so that is no longer the case, which means that they have been upgraded. So we no longer have any schools that would be like in those categories that you're referencing.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Great to hear. I'm sorry, I have one more follow-up. How are you involved generally? I imagine that Windsor Public Schools, the district, is involved with work at the state level to give them feedback, maybe on how this is being, you know, received by our district, and how you're using the information? I just would, I guess I just would imagine that because of how involved you are with state work, but you're, is there any process in place for them to even be open to receiving feedback?
No, not that I am aware of. The Accountability.
There was initially, when they, when they brought it out, they seeked feedback, especially from Alliance districts, about kind of our thought on, on some of the ratings. I can't say that all our thoughts got utilized, but Tasha and I will share information when we meet with the state on Alliance, and then also we'll share with their, their data person when we, we give feedback. So for instance, you know, several indicators are, you know, we struggle with a little bit. One in particular where we actually compare very well with our Alliance district colleagues, and then also across the state, on attendance, but I think also, as we, we compare ourselves as. But I think also as, as we, we compare ourselves to other districts, I think districts that have diverse student populations, where we have students that will travel during the school year to other countries, that's the only time they can see family throughout the entire school year, it's the only time they can afford to travel. But we have, we have students that I know our principals have conversations with their families. And I think they're very careful in how they approach it. But they'll miss, you know, we can have two weeks in the middle of the, the school year during that, that travel. And they're, they're excellent about giving work and things like that. And we, we work with our families, you know? We don't want to make them feel badly that they have to do the travel at that point. But that's not an issue as much in some of the other districts that, you know, we talk to in terms of that attendance piece. You know, we're finding too, post-secondary, you know, we've, we've traditionally been strong in that, but many of our students are, are taking, you know, what's called a gap year, you know, right after graduation. They might take a year to earn money working or, you know, not go on right to college in the, in the fall. We, you know, it's certainly something we, we encourage them to go on to college, but that's something that, again, I think we, we see that and they keep in touch with the, the high school. As we've talked about before with the board, we'd love to have more of a system to track, you know, what goes on beyond just that first fall year. But that's a, that's another indicator that, you know, we've provided feedback to the, the state on in the past.
Thank you, thank you.
You have a discussion? Mr. Dobler?
Thank you. Just have a question in regards to number seven and number eight. And if you've already answered this, I do apologize. The difference between what data is taken into consideration to make the district on track for high school graduation and four-year graduation different, say, than what the high school numbers are?
The, high school is looking at just Windsor High School, whereas the other number would include students that might be in an alternative placement.
That's my understanding. Okay, so it is alternative. Okay, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Sunday?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having Windsor High School here tonight to report on our 2017-18 performance in the state accountability report. So it's an honor to speak about the work that has been going on at Windsor High School over the last couple of years. We do recognize that Windsor High School is so much more than just a report in terms of the talent that our kids and our staff bring to our building. But nonetheless, what this is, is a solid instrument that helps us guide our improvement at the building level. A point of celebration for us, validated celebration, is the fact that we are right on the cusp of the state average. So the efforts and the work that every member in our building have been putting in over the last year, and certainly the efforts of our students are nearing us to that state average, which is at 74.9. And we're currently at 74.5 overall. So Dr. Oliver referenced a substantial amount of the indicators at the district level. So I'm not going to take too much time. What I would like to do is draw your attention to a few of the areas where we really showed some demonstrated growth in 2017 and 18. Windsor High School, an indicator number, see it number five, preparation for college career readiness, there was some marked growth. Chronic absenteeism, you saw our numbers drop by five and six percent respectively for all students and high-needs students. And our physical fitness tests had an increase of almost 100% from the previous year. And we still have a substantial amount of work to do in that area. Arts access has been a strength for us. At Windsor, obviously, we see the talent of our students at their performances, but it incorporates everything from the fine arts to the performing arts. And that continues to be a point of, of strength for Windsor High School. As we continue to do this work, a lot of our conversations, certainly at this point in the year, we start to look to wrap up this school year in this last quarter, but also keep an eye on the work that we need to do moving forward. Areas, strategies for future improvement in the area of academics continue to be around learning walks, as Ms. Fissell mentioned. Tier-one is not an intervention, it's a standard practice. So for us, learning walks and the work we've done around essential practices for instruction continue to be a point that we emphasize throughout the school year. We will continue to improve our analysis on student performance data in order to inform the work that we do through our various systems, whether it's NTSS, PLCs, or even restorative work, which we are onboarding this year. Working with Dr. Oliver's office, we are in the conversational process right now of working with a consultant from LitLife, who was in the building this week. And we're going to look to incorporate that work into the work that we do next year. And a substantial amount of that work is centered on teaching up to the core standards and providing versatility in instructional delivery. And also improving student confidence in areas of reading and writing. From climate and culture standpoint, we just onboarded the last of our systems, which is restorative practices. We've been working with a national consultant in Joe Grummer. We have a multi-year plan with a planning committee right now that consists of about 16 people. And we'll continue to go through iterations in preparation for our implementation for the 1920 school year. That being said, that would be the last of our systems, as we currently have our essential practices, tier-one, NTSS, to capture and support kids, PLCs for adult capacity improvement, and now this work for climate and culture. After this is onboarded, the next work we would do is really take a laser look at how all these systems can be integrated efficiently. We will continue to partner and work with everybody in our community, as well as in our building, so people recognize how they're involved and what impact they have in improving climate. Everybody has a stake in that work. And without a doubt, without a doubt, the foundation of this work, as it is across the district, is centered on equity work and ensuring that all students who come through our doors have similar experiences and similar access to the courses that we offer. Again, with climate and culture, we will continue to focus our efforts on student conduct and adult professional practice. In the area of talent and development, we don't have a lot of turnover at Windsor High School, which is good, but in the opportunities that we do have, we're going to look to make sure we screen and we bring in top talent to support the work that we're doing at the building level and challenge our kids with academic rigor. A point that I do want to bring up, and I know a board member, Furia, and Ms. Taylor can speak to this, is the work of the School Governance Council. I have been entirely impressed with this group. It's very dynamic with a host of people who have some innovative and very progressive ideas. The School Governance Council presented to me an action plan, a three-year action plan that really has five, five approaches, okay? And we're going to bring this work to the work that we do over the summer with our school improvement plan. And right now, as I see it, at the infancy stage of this proposal, a substantial amount of these ideas will be adopted. Some of the strategies are zeroed in on culturally responsive teaching, a PD that's led by students. And that PD's focus is centered on, quote-unquote, what works for me. So students are talking about things that motivate them, things that provide grit and resiliency. And then also, laser look at tier-two work from my intervention standpoint. There's also a conversation about reexamining our grading practices at Windsor High School. So we are encouraged with this work. We have a lot of work to do. A big focus of the work that we are going to be doing next year is really taking a look at subgroups, specifically high-needs groups, as it relates to their performance and a host of metrics. Most recently, we, last week, we administered SAT. And we were very proud of this junior class because out of a possible 287 test takers, 270 showed up, okay, to sit for the test. So we anticipate those scores will get released by the state in early June, with the idea that we'll see some, some improvement with student performance.
All right. Any question for Mr. Sunday? Mr. Dobler?
Thank you. I mean, it definitely looks like, according to these metrics, that we're trending in a positive way here. In your opinion, what's, what have you noticed as the biggest differences for this year or for this year compared to the year before? You've been here a couple of years now.
I think, I think we have a little bit more structure in the way we approach things. I think we have some very specific metrics that we've discussed that we'd like to hit. But as I opened up this conversation, metrics are metrics and it certainly guides, I mean, guides the work that we're doing, but Windsor High School is so much more than that. You know, because we can come, I can sit in front of you with a report like this that looks outstanding, but if everybody feels that their learning experience is, is not optimal, then this is where not. Obviously, a couple of years ago, we had a big wave of students re-enroll at Windsor High School. And if you take a look, you'll see that our chronic absenteeism has decreased. And to me, that's an indicator of engagement, that's an indicator of partnerships with families. What we do have to do is continue to push hard, continue to demand more of each other, continue to make sure that every child who walks through our doors has a similar and high-level experience, and continue to improve the profile of Windsor Public Schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Yes. I had a question on the 2016, 2017 versus 2017-18 on track to high school graduation. Looks like that number has decreased from two years ago to last year. And I guess the question I have is, do you know why that might be? And how do things look? Obviously, you don't have a crystal ball for this year because we're not done with this year yet.
We don't have a crystal ball for this year, but we are, we do track those things. So that indicator looks at the amount of kids who, in grade nine, who acquired five or more credits, okay? So that being said, we understand that every year the cohort is different, okay? But what we do look to do is monitor things as much as possible. Now, it doesn't necessarily mean that kids aren't close to that threshold of five. There's some kids who have four and a half credits and ultimately they roll over. But every year, we do, whether it's through NTSS, whether it's at the department level, we look to make sure we monitor that to the greatest extent possible, specifically in the core areas. So if, if English does not pass, if math does not pass, it can create a domino effect as kids progress grade by grade.
And one of the things you talked about was the School Governance Council, which is near and dear to my heart of being involved with the school. And I think I've told you personally, but I'd like to say it more publicly here, how impressed I am with the teachers, the students who are involved, parents and the community members. Most people are coming to those meetings. I was there the year before and it was very sporadic. And I think most people would agree it wasn't the best functioning. But in particular, the five teachers that are on that are, have knocked it, knocked it out of the park. And are very dedicated and, as you can see already by the group, already coming with a draft plan early on to be fleshed out between now and the end of the year. And what it gets to is really the school governance is all the stakeholders. It can't just be what are teachers going to do? They can't do it in isolation. It's got to be how do we reach kids in the best way? And you described part of that where, where students getting involved, we're giving feedback. And it's parents, parental involvement. How can we help parents to be more involved, to be in the schools, to find the schools welcoming, so that when a teacher does say something, they connect with that teacher? So I think that the work that's being done is great, so. But the good work.
I agree. One of the most impressive things to me has been the contributions of our parents, you know? Two of our parents either work in some education system or are familiar with education systems. So when we get into these discussions, just the strategies, ideas, and innovative approaches that are put on the table by the parents, non-employees of Windsor Public Schools, it's just, it's a rich contribution to the work that we're doing.
Ms. Sissel?
Thank you for the presentation. And it's great to hear what's happening in Windsor High School. I had a question around the, what you had mentioned around the three-year plan proposed by the School Governance Council and how that ties into the school improvement plan. Has there been discussion around the social-emotional growth of our students at the high school? I know that that's the one school that doesn't have the embedded SEL kind of programming that we would see at other schools.
So there's definitely discussion. As a matter of fact, there was a small committee that met today to take a look at social-emotional SEL curriculum. Additionally, the work that the restorative committee has been engaged in this school year has had a heavy focus on that part of the student experience. Also, with the work of Dr. McIntyre, she's put a heavy emphasis through advisories and the advisory curriculum, working with a cohort of people to reexamine it and figure out the best ways we can incorporate, in a very systemic way, social-emotional learning to our advisors program.
Great. I'm just going to share something I kind of uncovered recently. I wrote a really long paper on post-secondary outcomes among specifically young people who either have, have a mental health challenge, diagnosis, or develop one during their college year experience. And I uncovered that 70% of students who drop out within the first year drop out as a result of some sort of like mental health under, challenge. Now, when they, and then, you know, I kept reading and like investigating literature. And one of the things that just kept popping up was stress. And the fact that our students are not prepared to deal with and manage the stress. Not, it's not about rigor, it's about daily life stressors. And I'm wondering, like, you know, if, if I'm coming into the school and I'm stressed out and I've got all these literal life challenges happening around me, how am I going to attend to the rigorous standards that are imposed upon me through the academic curriculum, instructional practices, all these things that have been laid out? If my mind is not in order and I don't have any tools to be able to mitigate the stress, of course, our scores are never going to be where they need to be. Where it's just, it's unrealistic. And I'm not saying that you have to have all the answers, but I am curious, like, if that's coming up for discussion across the School Governance Council and through your school improvement plan discussions, data team, you know?
Yes, absolutely. So stress is a big piece of what we look at, specifically for me, as school principal, namely at this time of the year, it's important. And I'll explain why. Now, there's a host of variables that we cannot fundamentally control, okay? So.
Yeah.
Most of what goes on at home is educated. We can't just walk into somebody's living room and look to manage that. However, though, what we can be is, is an outlet for kids, okay? Based on the relationships that we form with them, okay? And I would say I would credit some of this decrease in chronic absenteeism to improve relationships with our students. That being said, I think this document in front of you, in many cases, probably also causes distress for kids. Let me explain why. The vast amount of these indicators right here that you see are assessments that are administered, at least at the high school level, when kids are juniors. So as I just mentioned, a lot of our students just sat down last week for the SAT, 270 of them came in. And in athletics, we sometimes say that there's, there is such a thing as good nervousness, right? For the first time in quite some time, we saw 270 juniors in the morning in cafeteria. I don't want to say they were nervous, but some of them did express being anxious, okay? Which is normal, given the profile of this exam. They took it and after the test, we asked them, how did you feel? And kids said, yes, 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 and, yes, yes, and one or two or X amount of people said, I could have done better. Those are all good academic indicators. That being said, the kids have a break. And then shortly after they get back from April vacation, we start to get ready for AP exams. And as you know, we have a lot of our students, as you see with indicator number five, we have a lot of our students enrolled in AP. have a lot of our students enrolled in the AP exams. Shortly after that, our students sit for the NJSS exams, which is a state candidate this year. And shortly after that, they come back and they sit for Windsor High School exams, okay? So for the juniors, it's an extremely busy year. And I think in some cases, that's why you referred to students about the exemption policy that I know is being discussed at the board level at this time. Our job is to try as much to listen to our students, try as much to build coping strategies around resiliency and grit, teach time management organizational skills so they feel like they have some level of control and management when things start to get a little hectic, overwhelming. And hopefully, those resiliency skills are built over time through the ages of 14 through 18, that when they do go to college, they have the stamina to adjust and adapt to that first semester and stay in school to finish their high educational experience.
Thank you. A very well, clearly articulated answer and response, and I appreciate your responsiveness. It sounds like you've been giving this some thought. And I look forward to hearing more about what you're going to be doing with the advisory periods and linking in the SEL into those, into that time. I'm not sure if maybe this is a question for Dr. Koch, but when would we receive more information on that?
So I would imagine that Mr. Sunday would be sharing that in our special meeting in May when we talk about, you know, the work that they're doing across the MTSS tiers on behavioral issues and social-emotional learning, restorative practices, things like that. So I think I can ask him to embed that in that presentation.
Great. I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any discussion? Mr. Bosch?
You said a couple of things that resonated with me. One is that what we're looking at causes stress for the students. I think it causes a level of stress for everyone in this room as well. And I think one of the things that's unfortunate is we're looking at the high school in a page, and you know, there's hundreds of students at the high school, and it kind of takes you away from looking at the individual student to looking at the aggregate. Really, the story to me is each individual student performing to where they can or, you know, beyond, not looking at one number that lumps 1,000 students. So that's a little unfortunate. The other thing that you said that resonated was relationships, and that you're attributing a decrease in chronic absenteeism to those relationships. And I think that's very important. I'm looking at the climate and culture bullets, and there's nothing that points out the relationships in there. I'm sure it's built into those bullets, but I think that's a, you know, key point for the work that's happening there. My, you know, the first, and I'm only going to ask this one question, but the concern for me with these numbers is on item six. And I know when we look at AP scores, it's sort of the same concern. We've increased over seven points, I'm looking at the index rate. Without specific numbers, you know, we've increased number five, the preparation for college and career readiness, you know, the percentage of students that are taking those preparation courses. But when it comes time for the exams, you know, our numbers are not what we'd want them to be. Looking at the state, you know, the state numbers aren't where we'd want them to be either, in fairness. But I, you know, I do wonder on that line item, you know, how do we make sure that if we're bringing students into those courses, you know, A, they're ready, and B, we can use those courses to make sure that they're passing those exams? I get your point that students are taking a lot of exams in a short period, but that's, you know, still, still an area of concern.
It is. It's an area for growth. So in all fairness, and credit given to my staff at Windsor High School, on SAT at the state level, we have hovered right around that thousand mark, which is a substantial amount of growth over the last couple of years. We still have aspirations to score anywhere between 1040 and 1080, that's the overall average. But more than anything, when you take a look at the subgroups, that's where we need to have the most growth. When you take a look at, the unique thing about indicator number six, and I was just having this conversation with mathematics department chairman, Megan Maines, is the way it's computed is the amount of students in AP who score three or higher and meet the benchmarks in SAT, both in English and in math. And I do have to say this, because we were talking about some of these districts, such as districts in Fairfield County, who just have our wages SAT scores, but obviously their community variables are different than.
Can you clarify what communities you were just talking about? I'm sorry, I couldn't catch.
We're looking at schools like, schools in Fairfield County.
Oh, Fairfield County. Thank you. I apologize for interrupting.
Fairfield County that have high performance in SAT. So we're talking about scores at 580, 610, 620s, okay? And there's a host of other variables that obviously impact their student performances. But when we take a look at the benchmark that indicator number six looks at, you have to essentially hit all three of them, okay? And there's such a variation between the benchmark from mathematics, which is at 530, you know, we know historically, kids have challenges around math compared to English, which is much lower. So we're having conversations about that, and we're trying to figure out the best way. So to be very honest with you, I think that's what's informing the work we're looking to do with subgroups. We did a decent amount of work this year with our subgroups, a lot of it was facilitated by ideas from parents in the School Governance Council. As our kids passed the test last week, we are eagerly anticipating the results come back in June, and hopefully, their performance support the work that our staff put in, because I have demanded a lot of them, you know, demand a lot of our kids. So hopefully, the results come back and complement the amount of effort that was put in.
Yeah, I would add to that, too. Of the 20 indicators, for me, that's probably the least important to us in terms of our work with AP. And so if I asked Mr. Sunday to increase that, he easily could do that by putting into place qualifiers to be able to take AP, so eliminating that open access that we pride ourselves in so much. And so if he put qualifiers in terms of PSAT scores or prior grade, love grades in other areas, he easily could raise that indicator. But I think what we've always said was, we want students to try AP, we want students to have that opportunity to take those courses and try that college-level work. If they come up with a two, then I think we just, we work on that for the following year and try and, you know, strengthen our instruction, strengthen our supports. We've done that through the board, you know, this was prior to the board putting money in for additional AP prep. But for me, I'd rather see five continue to increase before focusing on so much on six. You know, I'd rather that student that maybe is on that cusp try an AP course out and get a two. But then they've had that college-level experience, so.
Right. Which also supports college sustainability.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay. Ms. Jorgensen?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here this evening to share with you the accountability report for Sage Park Middle School, as well as some of the promising instructional practices that we have in place at Sage Park. Our first slide is actually our 2016-2017 accountability report numbers. In comparison to our 2017-2018 numbers, there is a slight decrease across the board. Although our numbers have gone down, it is important to note that we still are pretty close to the state average. And in addition to that, in the areas of growth, especially in the math, we are competitive with our neighboring crack schools, specifically schools like Aerospace, Greater Hartford, et cetera. So while we are not satisfied with the progress that our students were able to demonstrate on this assessment, we acknowledge that they're still working and we do have room for improvement. One ray of hope and sunshine in our accountability report is our chronic absenteeism numbers or lack thereof. And it's important to note that the metrics for this is not necessarily only the students showing up to school, but what it takes and requires to gain those numbers, for having a culture and climate that fosters inclusiveness, where students feel like they belong. These are the only ways that we can definitely work on maintaining and keeping the numbers of our chronic absenteeism very low. As we make our way to look at another data point that we, that we view at Sage Park Middle School, this is our star reading report. Our star reading report, I will say, was very surprising when we looked at the numbers in January. There's lots of work that's been in place at Sage Park when it comes to this school year implementing our new language arts curriculum from grade six through eight. And so while the numbers show a level of stagnation, I just wanted to point out that when we make our way through the classrooms, our coaches, myself, our literacy consultants, and we do our walkthroughs, we do see high levels of engagement. We see teachers providing actionable feedback at least 80% of the time. We see our students creating authentic products and works at least 71% of the time. We know our students can identify the goals and the purposes of the instruction that's in front of them, and students are able and see throughout the classroom visual reminders of all the expectations. And so while I feel that the indicators or the numbers don't give us a complete picture of all the work that is in place at the reading level, I do believe that we do have other indicators that shows that our students are progressing. I do know, and so does my staff know, that this is one of the numbers that is used to measure us. And so we are still working towards finding ways to have our students be able to transfer the knowledge that we feel they are gaining on towards this assessment so that it would be transparent to everyone. As we take a look at our math, star scores, so math in this area, our students are doing fairly well. So this is one of the things where when we take a look at, this is one of the first years where we are in our second year of implementation of our accelerated math curriculum. For the first time in a long time, our teachers in seventh grade are celebrating the fact that the students who matriculate up to seventh grade are coming with a higher skill set than they've had seen in the past. So this is very encouraging. What it does say to us is that the system that we've put in place, the tweaks that we've made to the curriculum, and the ongoing work that our teachers are doing through the curriculum, through the work, through small group work, is working, and we're starting to see some gains through our data points such as in STAR. When we look at areas of greatest improvement, math achievement by STAR, I just know it is an area of improvement for us to note. I believe that it's indicative of the work that has been in place for all of our math teachers. But I also wanted to share small group instruction and workstations throughout both language arts and math. And while the star reading score does not show accurately how our students are producing or producing work within the classroom, I will say that within classroom settings, we have small group instructions, we have teachers who are confirmed with kids. I know that especially in language arts, teachers set specific goals with each kid from the beginning of the school year. They measure their students' growth progress as we make our way through the entire year. In January, I met with every single language arts teacher, we took a look at their student star scores from the beginning of the year to January, and they were able to share with me who are the students who are not excelling, what are some of the reasons why they feel, and what are some of the steps that they're going to put in place to help ensure that the students succeed to make their way on further. In math, as we work through our workshop model, we are now embedding workstations throughout all of our math classrooms. So workstations allow for our students to demonstrate what they know in varied ways. It allows for differentiation, it allows for students who are excelling at high levels to be challenged, but it also allows for students who are struggling to have some more intimate time with the content at hand, and to see and work with the skill in a different way. For equity and climate area, chronic absenteeism, I think that's attributed to the work that's being done in the building. We do work hard in creating an environment where our students feel welcome. And through the different sports, activities, and celebrations that we have going on, we try to foster an environment where students want to come to school, they want to be, they want to be a part of the school, the school programs. We do have in place, however, if for whatever reason, students are struggling to make it to school, we do review absentee data weekly. We have mechanisms in place so that individuals reach out to particular students, first through letter, then through phone calls, to conference with students to determine what's going on, what are ways that we can help. And we do even go a mile further, where we have some teachers who text students in the morning as reminders to have them to come to school. And so while we celebrate our culture and climate in getting the majority of our students there, we do know that there's lots of work that needs to be put in place to make sure that all of our kids come in, even those who are struggling. And then we have second step lessons, ensuring that these second step lessons are provided throughout the building with fidelity. That is definitely one of our goals for the year. So we are certain that on a weekly basis, there is consistency about a social-emotional lessons that's delivered to the entire building. Our staff tries to make sure that they reinforce those lessons through conversations or when they redirect students about rule infraction, et cetera. And hopefully, we are still in the process of tweaking our second step process and the way we apply it within the building. We want to make sure that students have say. The program does offer a lot of variety for us, there's lots of lessons that are in there. And so teachers have the ability to basically take lessons that are unique to them or to their grade level from second step, just to ensure that we are dealing with issues as they arise, and that we are being intentional and not reactive. Student-led activities, this year, we've had a surge in student-led activities, be it through our Leos Club, which is brand new to the school this school year, also through our Leaders Club, our Builders Club, we have a gardening club. And so we encourage our students in these activities to do civic-minded engagements that help them foster a love for community. So we have kids who have raised money for cancer research, we have students who are collecting snacks for the food bank, we have students who, sometimes you see them out on the green, collecting eyeglasses with the Leos Club. So there's several things that we do along the way to help our students understand that we are part of a larger community and not just only Sage Park. And then teacher-led equity activities. This year, some of our teachers, and including some of our students, are part of an equity committee, where we work on trying to share with the larger staff at hand promising practices to make sure that we include all of our students and break down barriers within the classroom. And so, you know, it's one thing where I would lead an activity or another administrator, but when colleague-to-colleague are working together and students are also giving their input as to how they feel about being a student at Sage Park and what teachers can do to help and support, I think those measures go a very long way in building climate and equity within our building. So talent, particularly proud of this area. This year, our teachers have, we create a system where teachers can sign up to open some doors. We call it, you know, colleague-to-colleague observations. So, you know, one of the ways to break down barriers is to open doors, where teachers who have particular expertise and are proud of can then allow other teachers to come on in, observe them, or even if someone just wants to build their repertoire, different skills from their colleagues. So teachers sign up, teachers also go in into their classrooms. It's also another place for if we need to direct a teacher to see best practices, we have people who are non-threatening, that are within their environment, their colleagues, who they can go see as well. And so that's being done throughout the building. For systems, we have this year really taken on a rigorous For systems, we have this year really taken on a rigorous schedule when it comes to MTS Us. We believe that it's important that not only do we meet the needs of our students who are in Tier One, but also that we accurately meet the needs of our students who are in Tier Two, Tier Three. One of the things that we were lacking in the past was explicit action plans. Our students would enter into a Tier Two program, they would receive interventions and support from an interventionist, and then the skills and strategies that they learned would stay there within the intervention classroom. The classroom teacher in Tier One would not be familiar or aware of what strategies are being used, and then there was no way to then allow the students to practice that or those skill sets within the classroom environment. And so now we've created action plans. Every student who is in Tier Two has an action plan. Teachers regularly go in and they write down strategies and skills that the students have used within the intervention classrooms that are successful and that are helping them, and the teachers now within the Gen Ed Tier One have access to those strategies, and then they can help reinforce and support those within the classroom environment. Ongoing strategies for improvement, I'm proud to say that we are going to continue to implement the humanities curriculum, grade six through eight with fidelity. Our teachers are extremely excited about this curriculum. They talk about, I have a teacher who moved from eighth grade to seventh grade, and she's amazed of the level of complexity and sophistication that the students are now working with at the seventh grade, work that she said she had not delivered herself within the eighth grade level. So that's exciting, and our students are rising to the occasion. Also, we, this year, we, is our first time of implementing interim assessments for smarter balance. And so essentially, smarter balance provides us with assessments that are similar to those of the final smarter balance, but they focus on specific areas. So our students took these assessments, and one of the things that we realized that our students can do the work. Sometimes the complications lie in the fact that they had difficulties understanding the question, not necessarily applying the content. And so looking at the smarter balance interim assessment, our teachers were able to see which were the top five questions our students did well on, which were the lowest five that they struggled with, and they had that data as a grade level, but they also have that data as specific individual teachers' classrooms. And so take that data, going back into the classroom, delving into the information, looking at the way the questions are formulated, and giving students exposure to those, we believe will help them moving forward. Next is our implementation of the next generation science standards, our new science curriculum. This has been a big shift for all of our science teachers this year because it's a huge shift in pedagogy. It is different from how they've learned, so they are essentially sailing in the ship while building it, so to speak, but they are rising to the challenge. Our students are pushed to become critical thinkers, they are pushed to challenge their own thought processes and the thought processes of their classmates, and go back, revamp it, and understanding that it is a cyclical process of learning and evolving. And so they focus on the five E's of engaging, exploring, explaining, evaluating, and elaborating. And so as our teachers make their way through this, our students are learning, they are challenged. I sit in classrooms and just recently listening to students talk about climate change and the theories that they develop and going back and doing research and challenging each other's theories, but requiring of their classmates to make sure that they come with evidence to support their theories. I think it's amazing, and it's different from the work that they've done in the past. We also, going into the new work, we have our implementation of our advisory block this year. We are looking into changing it to some degree, making sure that there's consistency. I did get an idea from one of the last times I presented whether or not we would keep the same group of students with the same teacher for the next school year, and that's definitely something that we're looking into because one of our goals with advisory is to create that connectivity. When we have that small group of students who are working with these teachers, it helps to, for at least that one minute, for that student to have an adult in the building that they can go to. And so we are definitely going to keep it, we are going to make some tweaks and perhaps add a second day to advisory so that we can make sure that we help to continue to build connectivity with our students and our teachers in the building. Training and restorative practices is something that we're looking into. We have quite a few teachers who are going to attend training this May. So we are in the beginning stages of this. We are not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, so we're not getting rid of PBIS completely, but I do believe that there are elements of all these practices that we can put in place after we've done our careful research and vetted so that we can make sure that we take care of the socially emotional needs of the students that are at the middle school level, because developmentally, definitely, we need to do a lot for that age group. And then teacher-led activities, equity activities, very similar to what we praise as an area of greatest improvement. We hope to continue and encourage more teachers to take on leadership roles in the building and lead programs and activities to help improve on the climate and culture all around. As we move to talent, we have amazing coaches across the board in the district. I know that the coaches who work in our building are on a constant pattern of cycle of intervening and working with teachers to support them as they develop their skill sets within the classroom environment, especially now as we're embracing new content, new curriculum, making sure that they are comfortable and have all the resources that they need in order to be able to deliver high-level instruction within the classroom so that our kids can learn. We work with consultants who provide supports to our teachers and also to our coaches. The consultant comes with a different lens, and they offer us insight into practices sometimes that we may not notice, some of it are praises, some of it are areas of improvement, but definitely insightful takes that we use and we grow from. And they do offer PD for our staff, some of it is done one-on-one depending on the need that we see in front of us, and sometimes it's done by grade level. And lastly, we have our systems. Next year, we're really going to be working and developing our professional learning communities. We want the conversations around student work to be upfront and formal. We want conversations about what do we want each of our students to learn, how will we know when they've learned it, and definitely how do we respond when there's difficulty in learning. It is part of what we do through the data team process already, but we want to make sure that we set up ongoing cycles of this throughout the entire school year. We will be working to train our leaders who are professional learning community leaders so that they can lead the work within their content grade level. And so with that, we hope to see more and more improvements in our students' achievement. And then lastly, very similar, we've put a lot of work into providing action plans and support for kids who are in Tier Two, and then we need to continue that work to our, for our kids who are in Tier Three and need to make sure that strategies and skills that they've learned within the intervention classroom can, there's a system to allow them to transfer it into their Gen Ed classes. And so I say this to you, I leave here, and I'm humbled by how amazing the Sage Park staff is and how talented our students are. There's a lot of hard work that goes into the classroom every single day. Our students rise to the occasion, the more work we give them, the more we increase the level of sophistication of their work and complexity, they rise to that challenge. We just have to make sure that we have the appropriate systems in place to help support them, and if they do happen to stumble, that those systems are also there to pick them up and then move them forward. I think I said a lot in short.
All right, any questions?
I really do appreciate how well-prepared you were for this, and I think we all appreciate that I think you did that entire presentation in one breath.
With that said... Thank you, Mr. Dabla.
I know this was your first year as principal of Sage Park, so I have what could be a very difficult question for you. How's it going? I asked Principal Hurl this last year.
So I'm here. So I'm thriving. Some days are better than others, but when I walk into the building and the level of excitement from the students, the passion from the teachers, I've seen a shift in conversation within the hallways and in our copy room. I stand by and I listen to teachers talk about it's okay to give students opportunity to retake assessments. You know, we want to measure not how fast they can get it done within a period of time, but whether or not they have mastered the content. So when I can sit back and I hear teachers talking in that fashion, I'm encouraged. I'm encouraged because I do feel that we're there for the kids, and my teachers feel that way. So I believe we have one way to go, we up, and so people ask me usually, how is it? And I just tell them, I'm thriving.
Excellent, thank you.
Assistant?
Thank you for your presentation. I was wondering about, maybe this is like a follow-up question for another time. I'm, you know, I guess I'm aging myself a bit with thinking about DRA scores. I know, we won't go there, but I was wondering, because you mentioned the smarter balance assessments, and I'm just curious if at like some point we're going to see kind of all these assessments presented together? Because I think it'd be really helpful.
So we don't typically do DRAs or running records?
I know, not DRAs anymore, that's old.
Okay.
But you do have Sback now.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering if we're ever going to have all of that information presented at the same time for Sage Park or any other school? So we can see the assessments on Sback, we can see that at the STAR assessments, we can see the next generation accountability framework, we could see everything together in one presentation so we can get an understanding of like where the school actually is at? Because even just looking at this briefly, I see like ELA performance index, right? We're at like, you know, eighty-four percent, right, for indicator one? And then if we drop down to percentage of growth target achieved for all students, we're only at like forty-nine point two percent, which is more than ten percent less than the state average, right? So we have that information. And then we go over to the STAR reading assessment, and I mean, I would say that it's pretty predictable that we're going to have nearly thirty, I mean, more than thirty percent of our students in intervention and urgent, and there's like multiple data points now that are indicating that we are struggling this area. And I'm just, again, I'm just like reading this, I've been here for a little while, so maybe I'm drawing some conclusions that there's an explanation for, but like I am concerned about this. I'm very concerned about this, especially when we have like benchmark data that shows only a third of our students are actually achieving where they need to be at Sage Park's level. That's huge. I mean, that's, and I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, I'm not trying to blame on you, and it sounds like you're doing the work to try to, you know, to follow up with our teachers and say, hey, how can we support you? You know, what is your plan for kind of meeting these students where they're at? But then the data itself is like, whoa, like this is not going to work. This is not working, something's not working.
So the Sback data is used to create the accountability report, and perhaps maybe in a different format, we can then, we can follow up and send you what is that you're...
So the Sback data informs the next generation accountability.
Yeah, so what...
So you're going to be able to then present to us at some point the actual Sback data, or we don't have that information that's reported to the state, and then they analyze everything.
It's in here as points earned, those are the actual...
That's the only data then we get then as a board.
Herein lies the problem of the report, so you know, yeah, so we're in April looking at a 2017, 2018 report. So you received the Sback data in June for seventeen, eighteen. So we should receive our Sback data for eighteen, nineteen, within a few months, you know, so they've done a better job at turning that around. We're still not clear why it takes so long for the accountability report to be turned around and given to districts. So Sback informs, as Ms. Oregonson said, indicator one for ELA in math. So this is really probably the closest we can get. We could add an Sback-specific slide next time that just shows the Sback by itself, like in terms of the percentage, but the accountability report's going to give you a little bit more information. What I would remind the board on STAR, though, is that we have for now three years in a row raised the internal benchmark in STAR. So when we first started with STAR, we started at forty percent, and we were seeing results from Sage Park and our elementary schools in the sixty to seventy range, and it wasn't relating well to Sback. And so we raised it to fifty percent. And then we still saw some pretty high levels that was not relating well to Sback, and so we've raised it now to sixty percent. So we've gone back and changed any previous slide, any previous presentation or information that we've shared with you to make sure that's at the sixty percent, but we've been raising our bar internally on STAR to make sure that, to try and find that level where it relates to Sback. So in the past, it's been forty percent. You know, we could, you know, show what that would indicate, it would indicate probably numbers in the sixty percent range. And we remember a couple of years ago, we went through a lot of detail to share that with the board, we went from forty to fifty, and it just is, it's really allowing us to make sure that that triangle intervention is, we're going to hit that right mark on that where we are providing interventions to the students that need that in order to get them over that Sback bar. And so we're hoping that this is, you know, that sixty percent is where we're at. I know some of the schools internally, they will still run sixty-five, seventy percent just to see where they think students are going to be. And they'll spend the summer running those reports too to see kind of that cut score to see if a student receives a certain level on STAR, then that student's, you know, good chance they're going to pass Sback with a three or four.
I mean, I hear you, and I really appreciate you explaining that connection because I'm, it's just, it's a lot to kind of take in, and now that it's just been a lot of change. So I appreciate you explaining that Sback informs us, and I apologize that I missed that. I still am concerned, and I am, you can do all the adjustment, you know, you want, but I think my point is that continues to raise as a concern is the percentage of students who are continuing to struggle. And I just want to know, like with some assurance, that I would like it to be laid out very clearly, these are the assessments that we use, this is what the data is showing us, these are the, this is where they fit in terms of like the tiered model, because now you're introducing another tiered approach, right? And how, if I don't understand this, and I've been on the board for six years and I've done a tremendous amount of professional development around, you know, as a board member, how are we communicating this to parents and family members who are then supposed to links to learning, support the students within the home to understand what it is that they can do to strengthen the academic performance or just basic reading, right? Of, not basic, I know it's really hard as a student, with a student who struggles in that reading area of reading, like to actually help them. I just, and maybe this isn't a question for you, I apologize, sometimes my questions get really pointed where they're not supposed to be. It's more of a district question where I still, I still don't have all of these data points laid out in front of me that shows the percentage of students who are struggling, and then what are the interventions that we have in place to, in order to support their growth? And all I can do is look at this and say, OMG, like we still have twenty-five percent of our students in interventions between September and January, urgent is seventeen and fifteen percent still, and that doesn't seem any different to me than what I saw with DRA assessments where that indicated that twenty percent of our students, at least twenty percent of our students were struggling in reading. So over time, when we think about this cohort data or even just looking after a year of assessments, it's not, it's just not, it's still like we're missing the mark or something, and I just don't understand why. And it sounds like you're doing your, the best you can, I don't mean to minimize like your efforts, I just, and I don't know if it's an issue from the school. like your efforts, I just, and I don't know if it's an issue from the school.
I don't, I don't think you are minimizing our efforts. I do believe, and I don't think there's anyone here whose students score, or our students meet at above benchmark at a thirty percent is pleased. We do a lot of reflection within the building to try to determine, like what other things can we do to make sure that our students demonstrate their knowledge and what they know on the assessments? What we do run into sometimes, and this is by no means making excuses for what occurs, but we do see at our level sometimes, just motivation, sometimes. We work with our kids, we incentivize them, we have flipped schedules so that students who have language arts classes in the afternoon actually take their assessments in the morning, just to make sure that those extraneous variables that may have an impact on their ability to demonstrate what they know is taken out of the way. We do believe that high-level instruction is the only way our students will be able to produce and show what they know. And so this is why, you know, as we embrace the new language arts curriculum that we have, we, it is promising, we do see some growth in many areas. And I think it's just a matter of time before we start to see our kids demonstrate what they know in this particular assessment. And it is, it is one assessment in many that our students take, it is one outcome of many that they produce. I welcome you to see the work that our students produce, significant tasks, et cetera, throughout our building. Those are also really good indicators of what they can do and what they, what they're getting out of the instruction that they're receiving. But we are by no means happy with, or okay with only thirty-three percent, or even forty percent, meeting at a above benchmark. We believe that they can do better. And so we are continuing to do so with a sense of urgency.
Thank you. My last question's around the advisory block. The last time you had presented, if I remember properly, it was the homeroom and then advisory block?
Yes.
So my student came home and said that it would be helpful if their homeroom and advisory block were just built in together. So there wasn't the disruption between transitioning between classes. So that was just kind of a thought that I've been sitting with for a little while, that maybe could be considered, because then you could maintain the homeroom class and the teacher the same year after year. But again, I don't know what you'll do with that, it's just a thought.
I could answer, I mean, we did, we did think about that as we were trying to create the advisory block. The only problem is, not every teacher has a homeroom within the building. So ideally, we want to create those smaller classroom sizes. Right now, many of our homeroom classes run from eighteen to twenty students, between, yeah, sixteen to twenty students. And so wanting to create those smaller class sizes where we have about ten kids, and making sure that we use every adult in the building, requires them to transition from homeroom and then to another environment where we can use all the adults. But it was concerned.
Thanks. I appreciate your leadership in the building, I don't mean to like berate you with like my frustrations around test scores.
Part of the job, we're good.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have a discussion? Mr. Fier, just picking up on advisory, it was my understanding that Dr. Felder McIntyre was going to be looking at both Sage Park and the high school to try to have some consistency or be able to build from Sage Park and the high school. Now, you may not be the right person to be asking whether that's going on between, you know, looking at that whole picture, whether Dr. Oliver or Dr. Cook.
So I am welcome, and so is my building welcome, to working with the high school to make sure that there's consistency.
I thought Dr. Felder McIntyre was looking at advisory, because she's involved with guidance at Sage and the high school.
In the high school.
About how they, how, trying to build advisory where high school advisory is building on what's going on at Sage, so there's a connection as we build, just as we look at health curriculum from every grade level, so.
Yeah, my understanding of it is she started, she's here tonight, so we maybe want to bring her up in between, but my understanding, she started at the high school. Do you want to come up, Dr. McIntyre?
Sure, I just want to speak out, it's all right.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Come on, Dr. Felder.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
Good morning. So we are scheduled to present to the board in May. The work is still continuing, and the work is now being done through subgroups, through the climate committee at the district level, and there's another group that's working at the high school level, and I'm actually working with Mr. Fisher at the middle school level. And we have, the middle school has already, has had a well-structured advisory program implemented through second step, and there's some divisions and things like that that still need to happen. But there is creating that through line between the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And that work has been happening with the consultant of David Cormier, Dr. Hill, through a climate committee at the district level, and then through various subgroups. We actually just presented a draft of the plan to the high school team today, and we will be presenting the through line to the middle school, and then presenting it to the entire board in May, but the date is not confirmed, so don't hold this back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the work is happening.
Any other discussion?
You're welcome.
One thing I just want to follow, continue, just to make sure you owe people money for tonight, is there's so many exciting things going on at Sage.
There is.
And I'm so glad we have, the board has historically provided late buses between enrichment clusters, sports, clubs, technology, student association, so many things. And I've had many parents come up to me who were coming from fifth grade to sixth grade and say how wonderful it is for all the different opportunities for their students at Sage Park. And hopefully, those things may help, those connections to the school, connections with students, connection with many teachers who lead those clubs.
Absolutely.
Give those, again, the chance for the environment to be a positive one for students. So I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I do share Ms. Fissell's frustration, but I think my frustration is equal to the fact that, for me personally, I would love to see more supports being put inside the elementary buildings with the math and the reading, so that, you know, they're prepared. So when they do get to Sage Park, I mean, we're seeing some of the trends at the elementary level, and the asks are always consistent year over year. And we're trying to be fiscally responsible in what we're doing, but it's coming to a point now where fiscal responsibility needs to take a seat a little bit and stop providing the resources, in my opinion. So this will be a philosophical debate amongst the board, I do understand that. But I do believe that at some point, we really need to take a look if, in the future, if we really need to provide two or more teachers for math intervention, if we need to provide two more reading teachers, something in the elementary level where we provide that basic support, so when they do get to Sage Park, their foundation is a little bit more stronger than what we're seeing right now. Because obviously, we keep doing the same thing over and over and over again, and it's not working. And what I am seeing over and over and over again, is the ask for more teachers in the area of math and English and reading, and we're not providing those asks. So for me, I, you know, for me, I need, I guess, take a little ownership of that for my vote, when I don't aggressively push for those things in that area. So I need to take some ownership of that, and I'm willing to do that. But in the future, I think, as a board, I think I'm willing to engage in a healthy debate in this area on how do we attack this at the elementary level, to make sure when these kids get to Sage Park and the high school, they're more prepared than what they are right now. Do I have to answer that? I don't. I'm not the educator, but I do know that there's been asks, you know, to be fiscally responsible, we have not answered some of those asks. So for me, I can only speak for me and my vote, I need to take some level of responsibility for that, and need to become more aggressive in that area.
I'm gonna, if I may respond.
Are we going to go back and forth with this?
I would like to have one opportunity to respond, please.
Well, I have an opportunity to respond, yes.
Yes.
Ms. Fissell?
I would just say that, you know, I, in reflection on the past six years being on the Board of Ed, I do feel that we've invested a tremendous amount of resources into our buildings, and it has been responded, there's been a response of gratitude expressed for supporting the expertise of that we, of not us, but of the professionals within our buildings, and the academic rigor, the curriculum overhauls, there's been so many points made by the district that really speak to the tremendous amount of support that are available within the district. So I would just ask that it not be a fiscally responsible versus just in loosen up versus like a, just give whatever's asked, like that's not, to me, that's not the question, that's not the debate that I'm interested in having, because of course, we should be fiscally responsible. It's not our money. So therefore, we have to respect that we're dealing with taxpayer dollars, and we have to be able to demonstrate to them that what we're investing in is going to lead to measurable gains in student achievement, and then the whole child, right? And so I would like to engage in a discussion, a dialogue around that, because if there's an ask to increase the, the number of professionals within a building, that's going to increase our budget, as we just went through that whole process. So at what point do we say, okay, if we're going to provide this amount, or these number of resources, or this amount of resources, at what point do we say, okay, now we're going to hold people accountable? People, no, no offense to the people in this room, I just support you a hundred percent, and I believe in you, but that's also a conversation that we're going to need to be willing to have, because we're not just going to continue to balloon and expand without putting actual accountability in place, framework in place, and not just rely on the state to tell us how we're doing. We need to be looking within our district to say, with a fine-tooth comb, to say, what are we doing, and how are we going to hold ourselves accountable? So that's, but that's a conversation that I would love to have as a board, and I welcome that conversation. So thank you for allowing me to respond.
No problem at all. I'm of the belief that the one person that we hook, we can hold accountable is the superintendent, and the superintendent's job is to hold the rest of the district accountable. That, that's what we have him here for. Number two, I would hope that you and I would agree on the point that, on the point that all of us at this table that are elected to the board, we are all taxpayers, so it's all of our money, so to speak. So, you know, we're making sure that we're being very resourceful with all the resources that all of us provide at the table, so I don't, you know, I just, I just want to make that gentle point, like we don't, like we sit here, but we contribute to the pot as well. So as far as just the ask of just giving, 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 it's no secret that I'm willing to give the superintendent whatever he or she feels they need to educate the children. So there's no, there's no secret about that. The only thing I'm pointing out is, is that the superintendent has been asking over several years for these types of supports in that area, but I'm understanding that we need to be in a particular place to make sure that, you know, we just don't keep giving the ask, the ask, the ask. So I do understand that, all I'm stating is, is that for me and my philosophy, I just feel that I need to take a little bit of ownership of the fact that if I feel something needs to be pushed, I should push a little harder. But I am working with the greater group to make sure that we're all collaborative in what we're doing. So any conversation, I'm willing to put it where the goats can get it, and we have that conversation.
I don't know what that term means.
For the goats, it's a country term, that if you put it where the goats can get it, that means it's not, it's a very transparent process.
Okay.
And that everybody's involved in the collaboration. So I'm sorry that, you know, one of my, you know, southern roots came out a little bit, I do. But I'm just, I'm just very, I'm just, I'm very similar like that, but at the end of the day, I'm very passionate about this, because, you know, the numbers are not good as the way, as put it to where you say.
Yeah.
And we've been doing it the same way, year after year after year, and the ask has been consistent, year after year after year. So I'm willing to have that conversation, and I do understand that if we give this, something else may lack. So I am aware of that as well.
Thank you.
So I would, I would just say, and remind the board, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen followed a zero percent budget, which was not what anyone on the board asked for. So that will lead in perfectly until the next principal, who can share with you the impact of cutting elementary teachers had on her building as we go into Clover Street School. So we reduced three elementary classroom teachers throughout the district for seventeen eighteen. And in each of those grade levels where we had that reduction, it had a pretty significant impact on the students in those grade levels. It was, you know, a year that we started off without a budget, we didn't have a budget until December. And so there is an impact, you know, on our school district when we don't, you know, have a budget set, or have to make, you know, reductions in teaching staffs. So, leave that in to Ms. Williams, Clover Street.
Ms. Williams, good evening.
Yes, ready for me.
We are ready for you.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. So I guess I'll start, I know we're in this conversation, but Ms. Fissell, I can also appreciate your frustration, being the senior principal, and I cannot believe I'm saying this. I have not wanted to admit that, you know that. The eleven years I've been here, there have been ebbs and flows, and I want us to remember that, there are ebbs and flows when we look at data. And we are in the process of curriculum revision in both reading and math for the elementary schools and Sage Park. And as Dr. Oliver started us out, saying that this is not, these are not the numbers we wanted to see, but we do know the work that's being done in the schools with the curriculum changes and, and the work, the professional development that teachers are being provided. So having said that, I'll move forward with my report, because I'm certainly not happy with the data that we're looking at for Clover Street School. I'd like to just keep this up there for the whole presentation, because up here, Clover Street School outperforms the state twelve out of thirteen, in twelve out of thirteen categories, so that looks good. However, however, this year, in the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year, we did not perform, outperformed the state in twelve out of thirteen areas. We outperformed the state in four out of eleven areas, as you know, as Dr. Oliver said earlier, science was not a part of the accountability report. So in the areas that we did outperform the state was with our high-need students. And again, those are our students who are considered economically disadvantaged, our ELL students, and our students who are receiving special education services. So that's an area that we are definitely working on and continuing to work on. And another area would be in our chronic absenteeism area, we outperformed the state. However, it's, when I look at from year to year, we did have a slight increase, and so that's an area of still of opportunity for Clover Street School. And then there just, there are other areas as well, as I have in the other slides. Moving forward with our STAR data, and starting with reading, and as I mentioned, when I started, we are in a process where actually, we have a new reading curriculum. And you see, like I said, you see the ebbs and flows. So there's slight growth from September to January in grades three and four, and might as well say stagnant in grade five, it's just a one percentage point decrease. And as Ms. Fissell said earlier, with the four categories, we see our numbers at the bottom that are still higher than we want them to be. And so that's when we are looking at our systems, or we're looking at weekly, we're looking at our students who are in intervention, and looking at the different, actually, we're actually looking at the services that are being provided to them, we're actually looking at the service provider. There are times when we are changing the service provider, as well as changing the plan for their actual individual intervention plan in both reading and math. And we sit at the table with all of our reading coaches, our math interventionists, our STEM coach, our special, one special ed teacher, our school psychologist, and our head teacher, and the social worker, and we discuss students every week, as far as what their intervention is, what it looks like, as well as our district literacy facilitator. So, and in math, again, you see some increases in math. What this data does not show here is that our cohort groups, which would mean grade three to grade four, and grade four to grade five, show an increase from January... three to grade four and grade four to grade five, showed an increase from January to January. So I'll just, I can verbally give you those numbers. So last year, January, and this was at the 60th percentile, you heard Dr. Cook say that we increased each year, but last year, if we looked at the data for the 60th percentile, my grade three was at 39%. And if you look at, sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong data. My grade three was at 53% and this year they moved up to 58%. Those same cohort of students. And then last year, grade four was at 45% in January at the 60th percentile, and they have increased to the 58%. So if you look at that and you want to look at what our curriculum is doing for our cohort group, we're showing some improvement in our math. There was some slight improvement as well as in our reading, but I do want to say that and point that out as far as our STAR data that is showing for our curriculum. So areas of greatest improvement, you heard me mention earlier about our high need students in both math and ELA, as well as our whole school math and reading achievement increase noted by STAR and then the areas that I talked to you about for our cohort. One of the things that we are doing this year and continuing to do, I shouldn't say just this year because we're continuing to this, is all of our staff are involved in equity professional development. And that started right from the beginning of the school year with our convocation with PD with Dr. Darren Graves. But I have a small group of students, we all have a small, staff students, we all have a small group of teachers that has been meeting with him. I think we have three, we've had three or four PD sessions with him and we've actually brought a problem of practice to him and we're working on that. So for instance, at Clover Street School, we looked at our, our chapter books and the students that, the, the books that our students are choosing from. And we said, we need some more culturally responsive chapter books. So our challenge teacher and our literacy coach organized a meeting with, what was it? Leo Loop? Anyways, organized a meeting with a publishing company and we had groups of students meet with the publisher and talk about the types of books that our school needs. And so they actually, so the publisher went back and then has sent us a list of books to have them now preview to order for our school. Our, our teachers are involved in study circles. We had a group in the fall. We hope to have another group in the spring. That was very beneficial. I actually sat in on the fall one for the two days and you just go through and you discuss what your life is being the person that you are. I just talked about the stand up for books, that's what it was called. One other thing that we're doing in, for our equity is really looking at it when we look at our behavior data. We look at that monthly, we look at our behavior data monthly through Swiss and as well as our achievement data. So when we have STAR assessments, we look at our, our data, boys, the girls, races, special ed versus non-special ed, we're looking at all of that data. And another area that we are making some improvements on is in our school climate. And you've heard some other principals mention restorative practices. So at Clover Street School, this is our first year of investigating and, and being trained in restorative practices. I currently have 15 staff members who have gone through the two-day state training of restorative practices. And in restorative practices, the focus is on building positive relationships. And I heard that earlier. That's the key. That's one of, the research shows the number one motivator for students and achievement is the raw positive relationships that they have with their teachers. So that is a focused area for Clover Street School, is building the positive relationships. And to the point where I have challenged the teachers to get to know your students in our last staff meeting, I said, I want you to spend time with at least two students a day getting to know something about them outside of school, something outside of school, know something different about the industry. You should be able to talk to their parent about them when you sit down at conferences. We also at our school are focusing on school connectedness. Again, that's about relationships. That is a whole school goal. That is part of our whole school goal and every staff member has a goal pertaining to school connectedness. Every staff mem, not every staff member, I won't say every staff member. The majority of our staff members are also mentors to a student in the building, a student who needs some extra support. I mentor a student, I had lunch with my student today and just talked about an incident that occurred yesterday. We had a lovely conversation about it. She was able to tell me how she could have turned it around and done that differently. So one thing I can say that I see in the building with that is the positive conversations that students and staff are having. Another thing for our school connectedness, we started the year with the social worker going into every single classroom and she gives a little quick assessment, but one of the questions on the assessment is, who in the building do you feel comfortable talking to? Is there one person in this building that if you had an issue and a problem that you could go to and talk to? And then she and I sat down and went through all of them because I wanted to make sure they had at least one person in the building. And if they didn't, then we had to work on making sure that everyone has at least one person in the building. Something that I did personally, when I have meetings with parents or I have conversations with parents, I say to them towards the end of the conversation, one of the things we're working on here at Clover Street School is school connectedness. Please talk to your child about who it is that they feel comfortable in the building that they can go to and talk to about anything. I wanted to be more than one person, but if it's one person, we'll start there, but I want them to have somebody. And so for instance, I'll say there was a fifth grader who was having a difficult time in his classroom and we are departmentalized, so he has a humanities teacher and he has a STEM teacher and his humanities teacher was his homeroom teacher, but he felt uncomfortable talking to his STEM teacher. So once we identified that and I was able to go to the STEM teacher and say, so-and-so has identified you as the person that he would like to talk to time to time when he needs something to talk about. And I actually ended up moving that child from one class to another class and that teacher was the one who had the conversation with him about it. It wasn't his homeroom teacher, it wasn't the school social worker, it wasn't the school psychologist, but it was his STEM teacher. So those are the things that are important to us at Clover Street School, is making sure our students are feeling connected, making sure that when we're looking at our students, that we are providing them with opportunities to develop as a whole child. We're looking at, I heard earlier someone say, the different things that our students come to school with and are, are we responsive to that, you know? We'll have a PD at Clover Street School, we are going to have a PD in May on advanced childhood experiences so that our staff is prepared and understands what that means for our students coming to school. So strategies for improvement. When I look at, and I, and I realize when I did this, I still call these academics up here, S-BAC, I know we know S-BAC, but do we know IABs, interim assessment blocks and our state, our STAR data? And what we really want to focus on is our growth target. And I heard that mentioned earlier, like our overall doesn't match our growth target. And that's an area of opportunity for us, that's an area for us to look at our students and make sure they are achieving their growth targets on STAR, right, as well as on S-BAC. Are they achieving those growth targets and what are we doing to ensure that they're achieving those growth targets? So we need to, we need to triangulate our data. You mentioned running records earlier, we still do running records at the elementary level, so we need to look at our running record data, we need to look at our STAR data, we need to look at the interim assessments, we need to also look at S-BAC. However, our S-BAC data, we know that by the time we get it, we do get it in June, but by the time we get our individual student data, that's not always until September. So those, that's something that we need to do. Another thing that we are going to focus on is aligning our professional community's work to analyzing that data, which will focus on those targets. The other thing is, is when our PLCs, we need to make sure and that our, that what we're focusing on in our PLC meetings is the correct data, right? So sometimes the data that we're looking at is not always the data that is the data that's targeting these growth areas. So that's the data that I want our teachers to look at as the growth, I want our teachers to look at and really triangulate those areas that I talked about earlier. As part of our equity work, it's coming out of our Darren Graves work that we're doing, I will be developing an equity team in the 2019, 2020 school year and the people that I have on the team that are going with me to the Darren Graves PD have agreed to lead that work in our building. And then again, our ongoing professional development of equitable practices, again, we need to, we will continue study circles. I have teachers after the first group, like I said, we plan to hope to do it in the spring, but I hope to continue to do it because now I have, I would say like the study circle fever, like I had my band teacher say, Michelle, I heard so-and-so mentioned that they learned a lot in that two days. I really want to participate so I can support our students. So that's something, something that we want to do as well. And then the area of climate, you heard me talk about restorative practices and then what I don't want us to think about or, or throw out is our PBIS. Although I will say, after having been training under, I don't want to say it's a program, the restorative practices and really thinking more around building relationships, I am rethinking some of the PBIS, but we are working with Dr. Cormier with how can we keep some of the good things that were from PBIS and incorporate some of our restorative practices and making sure we're building on relationships. And in restorative practices, something that you focus on are, are your circles, are different types of circles to have with students. And with, it, it could be a student and a teacher having a circle, a restorative circle. So those are different areas once all of the staff members are trained that we will focus more on. And again, continue to find ways to ensure that all of our students feel connected at school. Again, I mentioned the staff mentors, but something else that we do, I mean, this happened with it last year, I had about seven or eight teachers that went to mindfulness training. So I have teachers who start their day with mindfulness activities. But I also have my head teacher and my behavior tech, they run different mindfulness groups throughout the morning. So there are students who need that extra support when they come to school and they need to just start their day in a, in a calm manner, participate in mindfulness, they participate in a breathing activity before they start their day or mid-morning. So that's something that we do every morning for a group of students. And then I heard you, I heard someone mention earlier about our parents. Of course, I did want to mention, one of the ways that we have our, our teach, our parents are informed about the interventions that they, their child receives in school is through, we have parent meetings. We all call a parent in and we'll talk about the different interventions that are going on. If a child is receiving tier two or tier three services, parents receive information on that and they find out who their child is going to be working with. The other thing that happens is during our student-led conferences, our students lead those conferences and our students talk to their areas of strength and their areas of support that they need from their parent app. So that's another way that parents are finding out what is happening with their child in school and receiving intervention.
Any questions?
So Mr. Furied, Mr. Bosch, or?
Mine, just a quick comment. I've, I've heard, I'm glad you've mentioned the mindfulness and that we are working with the behavior tech. I've heard that was a very good hire. I'm glad we did go that route to have behavior techs for JFK as well and that the hires, not only the position, but the people who've been hired have been excellent, so.
Mr. Bosch?
Yeah, mine was a comment too. I don't actually have a question, but one of the themes that I've heard, you know, every principal talk about is that connection. And I don't think I've heard that spoken so consistently and by everybody to the degree we're hearing it today. And I'm, I'm not sure, you know, what came through, but I, I think that's so important. I mean, one of the things I've said before, particularly at the, at the Sage Park and at the high school where they do have more activities, is I'd love to know, you know, is every student involved in something? If it's not something the high school or Sage Park offers, is it something the town offers? Or at least something that, you know, something somewhere. And if they're not involved in something, that's who we need to talk to and figure out why are they not involved and, you know, and I'm hearing it loud and clear here, those connections to the teachers and that involvement. I think that's so important. So I'm just really impressed because I think that will aid in everything we do. So, I mean, I guess if I had to turn it into a question, even though it was a comment, I'm sure that was always a focus, but it seems to be more of a specific focus right now and I'm not sure what.
A couple of things I can say. Our school climate survey from last year indicated that our students, one, didn't feel like they had someone that they could talk to. We did get that from our school climate survey. And then we had an incident at the beginning of the year that opened our eyes to say, we need to focus on this with our students. Our students need to feel safe, they need to feel comfortable, they need to want to come to school and they need, and they need to be able to have somebody to talk to when they come to school. If they're with us six, six, six and a half hours a day, they need to be able to have someone to talk to.
Yeah, thanks. I know Ms. Ravanola is going to have to be sharing next and I've talked to you a little more over the last couple of years. I know the work that JFK's been doing in that connectedness with students, with faculty, it's, it's really, really. I, I do need to.
I'm just going to JFK then.
But thank you. And I, I think that connectedness is going to just be, just a great strength and I think that's going to show all these numbers going up in the future, so.
I just wanted to say thank you. All of my previous comments apply, but thank you for letting me just air that out earlier. But I would like to also thank you for also the prioritizing of meaningful connections. It's so wonderful to hear. And I'd offer language around creating space for students to feel seen, heard and valued because those are really the pillars of a meaningful connection. And it sounds to me through the restorative practices that that's, that's the circle kind of, that's the approach. So, yeah, I'm happy to hear that and it's nice to get a bit more understanding of the restorative practices approach, so thank you.
Any discussion? Thank you very much.
Good evening. So I'm gonna, a lot of the work that's going at JFK, you've already heard from my colleagues because we, I'm happy to say that we're aligning ourselves really well and we're really talking and working together and reflecting on our practices. Some of the common themes you've heard so far, Mr. Bosch, you already spoke about that, is the student connectedness. That's really important. Also scores are not reflective of our students' abilities and the high-level instruction that we are looking to make sure that we're ensuring every day with fidelity. If you look at our, I'm, very hard for me to say up here today, since I was a school distinction in 2016, 17 for our growth target achieved work that we did, so it was very disappointing to get our results and see, to me, that's the most important piece, is that every student in our school is growing. And if it's not, if a child is not growing, then we need to figure out why and what are we going to do about it because that is not okay. If they're here, they need to be growing to whatever need they need to grow up to. So some of the areas that we did outperform the state in is the math performance index of high needs and I'm happy to say JFK's always had good chronic, we haven't had good chronic, we've always, low, chronic absenteeism. So that's always been a success for us, which I think goes to the amount of connectedness the teachers have with the students. They want to be in our building, our teachers want to be there. So now we're trying to drill down and figure out what is the disconnect? Why are we getting the scores we're getting? Here is our reading one. We had some, again, I don't think anybody's pleased with it. Overall, it is, it is disappointing and I think that's hard because when you're a teacher, you work really hard to help students grow and to get results like this. It's difficult, but I have to say I'm very proud of the staff at JFK because as soon as we looked at this and our S-BAC scores, we sat down and rolled up our sleeves and really started talking in PLCs, looking at student work, looking at data, what do we need to do? What is the work that needs to be done? One thing I did do, because I was curious, like Ms. Fissell was saying, about why are we getting these low scores? What is going on? I looked at our running record data just to see the comparison and pretty much across the grade, each grade was in the 60th percentile of students currently at or above on their TCR level. So why is that for TCR level and why are we getting this? And there could be a variety, as Principal Jorgensen spoke about, there's a variety of reasons, you know? Sometimes are we setting purpose for our students, what's in front of them? Are they really giving their best effort every day? Are we asking too much of them sometimes? I mean, those are all questions, we're all trying to figure out what is going on because we know that our students are quite, we're going around walkthroughs, we're seeing the level of work they're doing, we're seeing the level of thinking. If you've been at JFK, you've seen the injustice essay competition, spelling bee, and there's so many wonderful things going on in our schools. So what is the disconnect? We need to figure that out. I know Ms. Feiman, the humanities, humanities director myself, kind of talked about, is it that we're not, so at the running record level, it's their independent level, pretty much they're picking the kind of topics they want to read, so are we not giving them opportunities? So are we not giving them opportunities to read complex text that is not as a comfort to them? So if I was to read some medical material and I started at a lower level based on what I understood for medical and I increased, I could slowly get better because I'd have more vocabulary, I'd have an understanding of what I'm reading. So is that a piece that we're missing somehow? So we're working really hard, I think, in every level to figure out what is that disconnect? And what do we need to do to help our students? You've heard that we have the curriculum that's revised and we changed, so that, that does factor into it. We did have growth in our math scores, which was great. However, it's, we're still not happy, we still want to move. I do want to point out, if you look at the urgent, we're making growth in those levels. The levels are going, so we're moving our students out of that area. So we were happy to see that occurring. We do do all of the MTSS, we have a literacy team, a math team that's constantly looking at students' interventions to see where they are and maybe we have to tweak something if they're not moving. So a lot of that work is being done. The grades improvement, which we spoke about, was that we outperformed the state in the high needs and also for the chronic absenteeism. We did have some growth in our math and reading, as I stated. The equity work, a lot of it is similar to what Principal Williams spoke about. We both, which is nice, we're working a lot this year together, Clover and JFK, trying to make sure our teachers are really connecting and trying to understand what the work is that we need to do. And we had done the Darren Graves training, the teacher leaders. So they had gone to the training, just like Michelle, that Mrs. Williams had spoken about. They went to the training and my two leaders have already presented to my staff twice this year, which has been great because I think it's more important colleague to colleague to share the workload and to also build the leaders. We also did that teacher and student LEO and diversity group that Ms. Williams has spoken about for stand-up for books. We are in the process of doing restorative practice training. My assistant principal and my behavior tech went to that training for the first one. And then we had four other people scheduled to go, but we had a snow day unfortunately. So we're trying to figure out how to make that work more. But we are already implementing, we've been reading about it and learning about it. We're already trying to see, how does that fit into what we're currently doing with students? Getting them to kind of reflect on their actions and how their actions not only affect them, but everybody around them. So that's a lot of the work we're doing. Some of the things that Mr. Bosch had spoken about that we're doing, the school-wide initiatives for student connectedness. One of the things that has been the biggest, a couple of teachers talked about this today. We do positive Monday morning meetings. And at those meetings, we announce extraordinary egos, we celebrate students' work. We have a JFK community commitment that we cheer together to talk about how you're gonna do your best every day. We also have a monthly folk eye that we talk about building character. We've talked about kindness, positivity, self-control, making good decisions, word choice. And those focuses, folk eye, excuse me, are all chosen around behavior that we see in the building. So when we see an uptick in something, then we talk about, what is it really drilled down to? What is it, it's about making good decisions, it's about being kind to each other, about word choices. After our star scores, we decided we need perseverance because perhaps that is something that we're lacking. Right now, we're on empathy that we're working on. So a lot of those pieces are gonna help our students become strong characters. We have student interest clubs that we have before and after school. We have a house and town meeting that we have monthly. We also have instituted the student of the month again, as well as we have a golden tape dispenser that goes to a staff member that's passed from staff member to staff member. And all this is celebrated at our, our monthly meetings. We also have done a lot of civic efforts, just like Sage Park mentioned. We've done food drives, we have the Windsor High School girls basketball team was trying to get money to go on a trip. So we had them come and speak to our kids. We're trying to connect from school to school as well, so that we know that it's a larger community and you're not just, you're one school. Strategies for improvement. So the quote now at JFK that the staff and I are embracing is called, "Learning is the work." Learning is the work for students, learning is the work for us. We need to figure out, what is it we need to do? We sat down and came up with some action steps after the last kind of scores we saw from STAR and knowing about Sback. We've been given the interim assessment blocks that Ms. Williams has spoken about. And so we did that in math in LA. We've used that data to look at it in PLCs, so those have been valuable. We've actually got, been able to, you can drill down and actually look at the STEM questions, the questions that they're asking students. Because we're finding students are just getting caught up on what the question's really asking. They're not being critical thinker and reader, so we're talking to them about that. Make sure you understand what it is that the question is asking you. They were able to look and see what responses student had put on that in the computer. So a couple of times, you know, not a couple, quite a few times, teachers were surprised at students who responded with like one-word answers or one sentence. And we didn't see that before because it goes on the computer and it goes off, we never get to see it. So we were able to take that, show students, how, look at what you're doing in the classroom. How is this acceptable that you're doing less of what you're capable of on there? So those, all the work we're doing to try and figure this out. Like I said, we're breaking down STEM questions every morning. The students are doing a do-now that is related to an Sback-like questions. They're familiar with the questions and when they see the assessment, it won't surprise them. And it's good learning, it's not like we're, I don't feel like we're teaching to the test in any way. It's all about good thinking and good reading and making sure that you understand what it is that's being asked of you or what you are reading. We're also doing in math, we did an eye-ready assessment to kind of look at groups, to see what students, what gaps they have in their student understanding, their learning. Teachers are doing, as you heard from my colleagues, teachers are doing learning walks to learn from each other, to go into each other's rooms and seek strengths and where they can have areas of improvement. And lastly, I just want to state, you know, I think we all are very proud of our staff because it's a hard work every day. It's a heavy lift. When you come in the building, you don't know how the students are going to be emotionally. You have to make sure that they're able to access curriculum, you have to make sure that you have everything ready to go. So I think everyone's working the hardest they can and we are, we're not giving up. We're gonna figure this out and we're gonna make sure that we get some growth. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Sussle?
I just wanted to, I just, I just wished it didn't have to be so harsh at the beginning, so I'm still feeling that. But I just wanted to say that as, you know, just as a parent whose son really struggled with reading, who entered JFK, I was able to really witness what can happen when you apply the STAR kind of results. I think it's the STAR, yeah, because it breaks it down. And I remember fluency being a big thing and like, and I just like, I believe in the work that's being done. And I feel like, you know, now he's like reading just for pleasure. And I never even thought that would ever be possible. So I feel like that's part of why I get so passionate about this is because I remember crying, you know, because he just never thought himself that he'd be able to do it. No matter how much I encouraged him, tried to instill the growth mindset, it wasn't until he received the targeted interventions that allowed him to make the gains. So he built up his confidence and now he reads for pleasure. So I can just, I've seen the shift that occurs just in one child. And then talking to other parents who've had similar experiences, I just, that's why I feel so passionate about this. And so thank you for your efforts and I can, the more that I hear everybody speaking, I'm starting to get a better understanding of how this stuff is implemented across the buildings. And so thank you for further explanation.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I have one general question. Sorry, it's probably, it's probably more, it may be to you, it may be to Dr. Oliver. But it's on just the numbers for section two. I know when we looked at the district numbers for the percentage of growth, we're told at the district level, we're really measuring from fourth grade to eighth grade. So when we look at, you know, the breakout by school, what is that growth? Is that every year? Is that a particular year to a particular year?
So it would be, it would be like third to fourth, fourth with it. And third grade wouldn't.
So that is one every year, but the district just takes in for whatever reason.
Correct.
One.
Yeah, it's actually, every student has their own targeted score that you're trying to meet, which is great.
Ms. Sussle?
Ms. Sussle, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Earl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And we're getting to the end. I will, I will do highlights. Okay, Oliver Ellsworth. When we look at, obviously, the accountability report for the primary schools, really looks at the chronic absenteeism piece. That's index numbers for A and 4B, and that's for all students and for high-need students. What I'd like to highlight, obviously, in 2016-2017, we earned a percentage points of 86.9. When we look at the 2017-2018 report, I'd like to highlight that, again, in 16-17, the points earned was, were 86.9%, where this year, 17-18, it was 98.7% percentage points earned. That's 11.8% increase. Please note that the, all students in 16-17 was 7.7% and 17-18, 4.1%, so an improvement of 3.6%. And the high-needs population for 16-17 was at 8.8% and 17-18 at 5.7%. And again, a 3.1% improvement in that chronic absenteeism. And we engaged last year in a focus with an attendance team being implemented. And there was consistent notification, albeit letters, phone calls, face-to-face conversations, a few home visits that needed to be, we felt would be beneficial. And again, this ties with the other principals speaking to building relationships. That is obviously relationships with respect to absenteeism as well. What is it that a family or families may need? Our social worker was also providing some outreach and supporting families with community resources and information as well. When we go to STAR math, obviously, we are looking at grades one and two for math. Only kindergarten does not take STAR math, though on the early literacy assessment, there was a very small portion for a question, two questions, I believe, around math. So STAR for pre-K to two is grades one and two only. I would like to highlight grade one, the benchmark in September, it was 51%. And in January, we had a benchmark of 65%, that is a 14% increase. I would also like to highlight that first grade in January of 2018 was at 58%. In first grade, it's not cohort to cohort, obviously. But January of 2019, we're at 65%, so an 8% increase over the 17-18 year. I do, I would also like to highlight the number of students, the percentage reaching benchmark. We went from 48% to 55%, and that's 23 students, a 7% increase. But again, when we look at what we're doing, it's all about moving students and moving them from urgent intervention to intervention. And we are seeing that movement in math. And looking at grade two, you can't help but notice that there was a 3% increase, 41% to 44%. A couple of factors I can speak to to that, new math curriculum for grade two. So with the level of complexity within the curriculum, it's also new for the teachers as well. I also would like to remind or inform the board that the second grade class is also the kindergarten class that had a long-term substitute in the kindergarten class and providing academic and behavioral supports throughout kindergarten, first grade, and second grade. It's also the class at the beginning of this year, the second grade year, had two long-term substitutes at the beginning of the year. And actually, at the end of the year, they're seeing one long-term substitute. Our building is quite young and fertile, so that's what's happening. That's what's happening right now. But again, as you see, when we move to math, move to reading, it's not affecting reading as, as much. But again, new curriculum, so our teachers during look-ahead sessions are having conversations with the math coach and, and looking at what portions of the curriculum, what needs to be revamped, retweaked. What, how can they provide skills and to better fit the needs of the students? And the area of greatest improvement around math, I will speak to that in the next slide. But again, that's through our focus through a school improvement plan on work, math workstations. And we are seeing improvement in there and I will allude to that in a moment. For reading, STAR reading, reading and early literacy, please be mindful that kindergarten, even though I have the benchmark of September 2018, you'll notice under the percentage for kindergarten, they do take the assessment in November. They're not ready to take that assessment in September with the rest of the school. What I would like to highlight is, if we're looking at the whole schoolwork, the benchmark, we went from September 44% to 59%, 148 to 202 students respectively for each. That's 54 students improvement or 15% if we want to talk about percentages. I would also like to highlight the urgent intervention piece. We had students who were at urgent intervention at 21%. In January, we are moving to 12%. Also, please note that in September, when we're talking about urgent intervention students, we're only talking about grade one and two. When we look at January, we're also folding in kindergarten who are now taking the assessment for the second time. So we are at 12%. If I'm talking students, urgent intervention in September, it was 71 students. In January, it's only 41. So it's a 30, 30, 30 students decrease or who have moved up. Also, would like to highlight grade two. Again, it's not cohort to cohort, grade two, their, grade two movement last year, we had 60 students at 56%. And in January, and January 18-19, we have 69 students at 62%. So there is a six percentage point increase. You will notice, however, grade one has a large, the largest improvement. But grade one, as we know about students, the early learning coming from kindergarten to first grade, it's the foundational skills that they are needing to work on and to improve. So it's the skills that we focus on. And as students become developmentally ready, they take off in their reading. The foundation is set and they, it's, you'll see them start to soar. It's the grade that you will see the most, the most increase or improvement in reading above any other grade level. Areas of greatest improvement, again, academics, reading and math were highlighted in the previous slides. Climate, again, chronic absenteeism was highlighted through the accountability report. And then second step with fidelity. I would like to share that second step with the fidelity of implementation piece. That is a part of our school improvement plan. So we were really looking at that fidelity piece of where were all teachers implementing the second step? What did it look like? What times of the day? So we gathered data, did surveys, and we're doing walkthroughs through that. I would like to say that with the improvement of chronic absenteeism and with the fidelity, obviously, of second step, going back to relationships, it's about relationships with the families and the students. And I would like to state that the fidelity of implementation, one of our pieces we were looking at was the impact on office referrals. We're not, we have not completed the year, obviously, but I would like to say that looking at our office referral data through CISS, through SWISS, there is a lower percentage of students with six or more referrals from this year than there was last year. In 17-18, we had 9.5, 9.54%. And this year, we have 5.30%. So we are seeing a decrease in our ODR referrals. Again, I believe that has to do with relationships and some of the mindfulness practices that are happening. We have two reading teachers doing yoga in the mornings with some students. I have my social worker, or the social worker rather, doing mindfulness one day a week in her room. We have, obviously, the second step piece. We are doing reteaching for any students that need some reteaching during Husky game plan or mindfulness breaks for those students that need to take a break from the room and go see a mentor and have a conversation. Equity, the OE Husky Action Team, that is actually a team of community members and staff members. And we reinstituted it last year, but it's really taken off this year. Where we have teachers, parents, actually, there's a board member that sat on, sits on us. Ms. Taylor sits on our OE Husky Action Team. Taylor sits on our OE Husky Action Team. What's happened with that team is we also have students that are involved and teachers that are leaders, and we have had a parent come and assist with our, in February, our presentation, our diversity presentation, she helped with the implementation of that. We have our first Chat and Chew book group, which was last Thursday, and that was a book group that read and discussed Becoming by Michelle Obama, a good turnout for that. Also, with the OE Husky Action Team, we have teachers that are on there, and one teacher in particular, who has instituted through the Windsor Leadership Corps, she is still, this was two years ago, she did a Husky Leadership Pack, where we're bringing students, trying to build the skills, leadership skills of students. So we actually have students being, leading some of the equity in the building and putting it into the forefront and doing announcements now and during the month. For example, during February, doing morning announcements and highlighting people of color who have had, made significant achievements this month. They're highlighting women, since it's Women's History Month, they've created a bulletin board where the students work, so it's visible and it's out there. Also, we have staff for, who are leading equity efforts. We have the study circle, but staff, we have two staff members who are part of, as Principal Williams and Ravenola had alluded to, Darren Graves, and they're part of presenting equity efforts to the staff throughout the building. Another area of greatest improvement is talent, staff efficacy, and I was trying, I was thinking about talent and how it's being done, and the efficacy piece came to me. We know the definition of efficacy is the power to produce, produce a result, and the synonym is effectiveness. And what is happening is it's, efficacy is happening in two places. It's happening in reading, and it's happening in math. The piece for reading, it's being done through improving teacher practice, through tier-two supports outside of MTSS, tier-two supports that teachers are providing in the room. So we're building teachers' capacity to provide those supports, and that's being done through the assistance of Dr. Kearns from UConn, and providing one-on-one work with the teachers and observation feedback and support plans for students. And then also, teachers as leaders. We've increased teachers providing PD and/or sharing information learned from a workshop, and we've had ten teachers presenting or sharing information to the staff. Attendance at workshops has improved. We had seventeen staff members approve workshops outside the district, attend workshops outside the district, and then provide that to us. And then another example of, within the community, we had our two physical education teachers host a basket, host with the approval of Principal Sunday. We had, during halftime, we had students on the basketball court with the gym teachers and doing some skills there. And then also, the gym teachers and our music teacher, again, leading the way and providing supports for families and students, doing a music and movement, so tying in some of the curriculum aspects and, curriculum aspects for music and for movement, tying it in. So we had a huge turnout for that, and it was a wonderful night. So it was actually our first annual, we'll do it again next year. Strategies for improvement, academics, reading, tier-two focus. Again, that focuses on classroom teachers and supporting them in their development of providing supports for skills within the classroom for teachers, students who need help. Math, we are looking at workstation complexity, and that is meaning not just the workstations themselves, but the complexity of the work within the workstations and the differentiation to meet specific student needs within there. Climate and equity, we're looking at community and staff consortiums. Again, how do we then bring outside of the Husky Action Team or inclusive of that? How do we then build support for community and staff outside of board members, parents, bringing them in? What does that look like on a more global scale? And then, obviously, social, emotional learning. The second step piece, we've done the fidelity piece, but we're looking at how do we, how do we really fold that in, not having it, not having just a program initiative, but also looking at the restorative practices piece. I, the climate committee, we have our two coaches who have gone to restorative practices training. The rest of the climate team will be trained by the end of this year, and then we'll be folding it in, and again, a teacher leader, teacher as a leader initiative, they will be heading the equity pieces as well and the restorative practices pieces. Talent, colleague-to-colleague opportunities. Again, I believe it was Principal Jorgensen who spoke to opening those doors and not having your doors closed. We can learn best, we learn best from observing our peers and having those conversations. And I spoke about this, teachers as leaders. And then the systems piece, obviously, the student support team, which we implemented, again, this year, but refining that process. So we actually have a more, a more specific or a, a better outlined process or protocol for students to receive support. So this, the initial contact is made by the teacher, it goes to the support team, who then looks at and talks with, looks at the interventions that have been in place, brings in the literacy coach, math coach, we bring in parents, so it's a whole consortium of people at the table, including family members and parents. And then, obviously, our behavior team. The behavior team is a group of social workers, a social worker, case managers, assistant principal, principal, how in our behavior tech. So what supports are we putting in place? What are, what's working, what's not working? And then identifying other resources that can be of value. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Sir, I know last year, there was a leadership group. I don't know if you alluded to that or not. Does that still exist?
Yes, yes.
And what do they do, or what, I mean, I know that there were kids last year were very excited about being in that, and they came earlier in the mornings, I don't know if it was one day a week or whatever. What, how are they able to react or interact with peers? Or how does that, that piece of that work?
Good, interacting with peers, good question, but the leadership group I was speaking of is that leadership group. The name is the Husky Leadership Pack. So it is, what happened at the end of last year is we had some of those leadership students start training, some of the students that the teachers felt could move into that for this year. So those are the students that are working with one of the teachers who was on the Husky Action Team, which is the parent group. So it's kind of a melding of that piece. I, as you are asking the question, I am asking the question of how can we bring those leadership students into that OE Husky Action Team piece? So we're getting actually their viewpoints and their perspectives. I'm a part of that.
I think, as we alluded to before, about connectedness and having a teacher, an adult, I think it would be great to have, you know, to have second graders where a first grader or a kindergartner could interact with somebody who, or again, be a go-to person who's similar, similarly situated in age, you know, at that point, and see role models there.
We do provide that opportunity academically, so we have students in both math and reading who are peer readers, and will go down, we have second-grade students that will go into first grade, first grade that will go into kindergarten, second. So we do a lot of that kind of intergrade mentoring as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Just a comment. I don't have a lot of questions tonight, but one thing I appreciated was you explaining the difference in the benchmarks between September and January. I think we let everyone else off the hook on that area without asking for more of an explanation, but I did see that forty-one and forty-four. That was actually something I was going to ask about in light of some of the other numbers, but I thought you did a nice job of taking a look at across the grades, at why there was, you know, an increase, or in this case, you know, no decreases, and really kind of offering an explanation, which I found very valuable. I imagine that that is happening at all the grades. We didn't ask for more, but thanks for, you know, that insight.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we saved for last the principal known for brevity, and that's a crazy piece of Paquonic.
Well, I thought you were going to say something else, Doctor. I'll keep those ideas still off the air. All right. I will be brief. If I can figure out how to work the clicker, that would be the main goal for the night. I said I was period. All righty. So like, oh, so much of what you've heard tonight, I won't bother to repeat the same thoughts and themes. So same piece, we're a primary school, on the district accountability report, all gets reported, is chronic absenteeism. From last year to this year, the great thing about this for chronic is we've reduced those numbers by half with a less than three percent gap between all students and high-need students. So, you know, absenteeism is one of those things where, depending on the flu and stomach bugs and all that good stuff, sometimes it looks differently, but this was a great year for us in the protocols that we put into place to ensure that our students are coming to school. So again, like all the other schools that give STAR, we give STAR math and STAR reading and early literacy, as was just mentioned. From Oliver Ellsworth, you know, kindergarten students don't take this, but what I'd like to point out is at Paquonic School, there's been a faithful implementation of the new math curriculum, which has really resonated well with us, as well as the math workshop model. So you can see from September to January, in both first and second grade, about a twenty percentage point growth from September to January. So we're really excited about watching those pieces come together and produce results for our students. One of the goals that we've been working on at Paquonic in our school development plan is the idea of reducing the number of students who are on watch. Our goal for this year is to have only about fifteen percent of our students end up on watch, and you can see here in January, we're already at only sixteen percent being on watch. So we're proud of that work. And then, as always, we want to have as few students in intervention and urgent intervention as possible, so reducing that urgent intervention category is also an area where we're continuing to work. Early literacy, here at STAR, you can see our kindergarten students with additional kindergarten classes this year. You know that we had an explosion of students. You never really know what that's going to do to your building or your numbers, and this is typically the grade level where we're used to seeing really high achievement levels. I have a top-notch, very experienced, high-quality kindergarten team, and so they're used to getting really great results. So to see them maintain that high level of achievement with brand-new, I have two brand-new teachers added to the team. So I think it's just a testimony to the strength of the team, the collegial relationships, the ways in which they support each others. We always have great families, and so they've maintained a high level of achievement in kindergarten.
Blessings.
As a whole school, if you look at the second graph, or chart, rather, you can see at every level, students have increased where we want them to increase and decreased where we'd like for them to decrease. So in benchmark, we want more students hitting the benchmark, we want less students on watch, less students in intervention, less students in urgent intervention. There is that shifting piece that happens, right? As you move up, one number gets higher, but what our goal is, is to continue to move the appropriate number of students into the next level, so one level doesn't become overwhelmed with a number, a number of students. And I think to date, they're doing really a great job doing those pieces. So areas of greatest improvement, there is a complete fidelity to tier-one instructional model in literacy and math. We use both the workshop model and ELA in math, and I feel very confident in saying that across K to 2, all of the teachers are implementing that model with fidelity like the other schools. We have both the STEM teams, the literacy teams come in and do a kind of evaluation of our work, and we've received really positive feedback around our implementation. Nothing is ever perfect, right? But we're getting as close to that benchmark for ourselves as we could, can get. The other piece I would say is really great now is in every grade level, preschool through second grade, there is complete curriculum. And so our teachers are implementing curriculum in preschool, math, science, and social studies, and literacy curriculum, kindergarten through second grade, so there are no longer any kind of curricular gaps. Like in the other grades, we have all, we have teacher leadership and equity work, but one of the changes we did this year at Paquonic School was we included all staff in our equity work. Up until this year, it pretty much been our certified staff, classroom teachers, et cetera. This year, we extended it to, we did study circles with lunch monitors, nurses, our paraeducators have been involved in all of our equity work, really trying to be more inclusive in the way we train and develop staff, because everyone works with families and students. We thought it was important that everyone have that same level of training to provide a welcoming and equal kind of experience for all of our students. And then we continue to see very favorable ratings from our climate surveys, from our families. So our strategies of improvement, I'm sorry that Ms. Fissell had to leave, because under academics, this is our one, two, and three tiers, one, two, and three, right there under strategies for improvement. So we increased the expectations for tier-one for all students, our reading benchmarks, our STAR percentile that we were looking at for students. As a district and a school, we've had an enhanced focus on tier-two. Really, once you raise the bar, what now is defined as a tier-two student is a little bit different. And so we've really been making sure that as a staff, we all have the same understanding of what constitutes a tier-two student, and then how do we gradually move that student back into needing just the tier-one experience? And then the enhanced structures and supports for students who need that. So one of the things I've really tried to do is not do something new every year, but get better at the work that we're already doing. If you continue to change your focus every single year, you can never say what's accounting for what. So now, we're really trying to fine-tune, tweak all of those structures and systems so that all students are maximizing the resources that we do have available to us. We continue to do ongoing professional development in equitable practices. We talked, I talked about that a little bit earlier. And then in terms of climate, so at Paquonic, you know, listen, I have the youngest kids, it's easy to be connected to them. They're sweet, they're cute, right? They're five, they're three. One of the things that our climate survey, so that wasn't our problem. So what our climate survey revealed, that it was inter-family connectedness. And so if any of you, I think some of you may have ever gone to the Family Engagement Conference with Karen Mapp, one of the big points that she makes at that conference is that many of our families cannot name the first and last name of five other families, really, two other families of the students in their classroom. And on the climate survey, there is a question that asks families, how capable do you feel to make connections to other families? And that was actually, it stood out as an area where families really didn't know how to relate. We have lots of events, lots of engagements, right? And they come there with their child and the people that they know, but they don't really expand that circle to be connected to families that they don't know. So one of the things that we've really been working on is trying to structure some of those experiences so our families, so they can get to know each other, right? Depending on where you live in town, we all draw from the north end and the south end, and sometimes families just know who they know because of the circles they're in, the things their children participate in. So we wanted to be more mindful. So we, one of the things we do have is a school directory. And so now, every family can decide what information goes into the school directory. In previous years, we've asked parents if they've wanted it. This year, we gave it to anyone. And then we also, if you were a new family, you usually didn't have an opportunity to get a school directory, because we did it in September, October, but this year, we printed extras. So anytime a new family came along, if you enrolled in January or March, you too had access to that school directory to help you make connections to other families and feel like you are a part of what's going on. So that's really been our school climate work. And then the only other thing was, the other piece of the school climate survey revealed was, you know, people were, most people of Paquonic was, you know, people were, most people at Paquonic were really happy, but then there was like this small sliver that was not as happy as other people. It really was. And so I started to think about like, because it's anonymous, like who could this be? Like who are these people that don't feel as connected, right? And I said, it didn't matter, right? It didn't matter. So what we did was we made a concerted effort to make sure we extended everything we were doing to every staff member, which included tutors, lunch monitors, paraeducators. So they're involved in our family engagement committees, our sunshine committees, our staff breakfasts, making sure that we were inviting all people to have a voice and to feel a part and connected to the things that were going on there. And so we're in the midst of doing our school climate survey now, we're hoping that that, extending that arm to hear what people had to say, to feel more connected to the school will allow them to feel more connected to Paquonic. So I would say the state of the state is great at Paquonic and we're glad to be last.
You mean the state of the school?
Well, messing with my rhyme.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ellevell.
Any discussion? Mr. Bosch?
Okay, brief, just a comment again, I have very few questions tonight, but this really tied a lot of things together. And I feel like the questions I did have coming in tonight, somebody answered, whether it was listening to one school and I had a question that I didn't ask, you know, another principal for another school answered. And I think, you know, back to connecting the students, I had other questions about connections and what you said about connecting all of the staff, certified, not certified, to participate in the school, connecting the families in the ways you have. I think everything about the connectedness, which is a theme all six of you presented and as we come together and we connect staff, we connect students, we connect families, I think this is going to be a huge win. We might not see it in the numbers in a year, but I think that's one of the things that's really going to drive us forward. So it's just great to see here, what's happening in that area. So thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Fury?
Also, just a comment, I was able to attend the STEM night with PTO sponsored event with teachers and families really seemed to enjoy it. I went to both the robotics, three robotics teams were in the gym, but then I also went to the cafeteria where they had all different types of like Osmo and other games going on, some I didn't completely understand, even though they were probably for first and second graders.
Trust me.
But just show that, again, all with parents and students and moving around so both that parents had opportunities and kids had opportunities in both rooms. Very well done.
That's great, thank you very much.
All right. Any other discussion? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Announcements, Mr. Ellevell?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Halleck?
No announcements.
Thank you. Ms. Khan?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that was here today. Everybody's presentations were very detailed, organized and helped paint like a broad, but still unique picture of what's going on in each of the schools. So thank you for coming out and preparing your presentations.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bosch?
Just echo the thank you, thank you, nothing else.
Mr. Fury?
Same thing, just thank everybody for spending the time with us and also your extended support staffs that are also here as well. Thank you for sitting through all of this.
Thank you, Mr. Fury, and I echo the thank you for everybody. Thank you for your hard work and everything you do within our buildings, you and your staff under your leadership. You are truly appreciated. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Say a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ellevell, second by Mr. Bosch to adjourn. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All vote saying abstention, motion carries, six zero zero, we adjourn at nine twenty-five. Have a good evening.